I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, June 13th, 2016, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the Table 5.
Yes, there are. In fact, as we were counting, this is the largest agenda packet you have ever received. And that's because it does have a number of things that were in the agenda to begin with, things like the Citizenship Handbook and a number of other pieces, and also three... Sorry, I forget. Let me try that again. There are a number of items on the... in the Table 5, and again, not only this is the largest packet that we've ever produced, because in this packet originally, you had three different sets of information from various groups to talk about the 2016 legislative session, but we've added another 75-page document that basically has additional information about all of the things that either did or didn't happen during the 2016 session. On top of that, however, we also have a number of appointments, as you can see, some increases, decreases, and changes in assignment, resignations and retirements, and information on middle school overnight school student field trip request. We also have for you in the packet, the end-of-the-year enrollment report as of the last day, and would also indicate to you that we have reached a milestone, which is the largest population at the end of the year that we've had in the entire time I've been here, at 4,026 students total. And that is it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. If there's no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes from the regular school board meeting held on Monday, May 23rd, 2016. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, May 23rd, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, we have a couple of announcements this evening, and then we'll be turning this over for a presentation. So first of all, spring sports state tournament participants are in girls' golf, Molly Stevens, girls' track, Maya Jerick, boys' track, Gus Foss, and the boys' baseball team. The boys' baseball team also won its second consecutive section championship last Friday night. Raiders opened the state tournament on Thursday versus Henry Sibley, so congratulations to them. And then, we'd like to ask Gwen Daniels and Sandy Malka, who are going to be presenting an award tonight to John Stens, and Heather Poush on Poush, I'm sorry, on behalf of HCI, the Making a Difference Award, ladies.
And Stephen Mark, why don't you guys come up? You guys are ready for this, too. So thanks for this opportunity. So as many of you know, each month, the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative presents a Making a Difference Award to an individual or group in the Northfield community who is having a positive impact on the lives of young people. We receive nominations from throughout the community, and these are reviewed by a panel of youth and adults. We are excited to award John Stens and Heather Poush this month's Making a Difference Award for their commitment to helping youth explore careers through the Business and Technical Trades Career Exploration Day, held at the Northfield Middle School in May. Force America commits financial and human resources to planning, coordinating, and executing the event, which allows over 600 middle and high school students, their teachers, and their parents to gain a hands-on look at careers in business, manufacturing, transportation, law enforcement, and many more. John and Heather also commit time monthly to the Northfield Promise Career and College Readiness Action Team, volunteering for subcommittees, and supporting the work of the Youth Future Program. They have demonstrated a deep commitment to our community's youth, and we are grateful.
Thank you. You have to.
Of course, we would like, love to add our congratulations and thanks to you as well. It's absolutely amazing what Force America, your team, and the CTE Booster Club has done with the CTE Day at the middle school. I serve on the CTE Action Team as part of Northfield Promise with both of you, and the insights that you've given the committee about workforce and future workforce development has just been invaluable. So I have to tell Heather, I've had a number of contacts who have been at the CTE Day, and they have traveled trade shows all over the country and said it is absolutely the most organized event they ever participated in, so it's truly top-notch, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I think it would go without saying, but without the help of the instructors and the faculty at schools, and then the Healthy Community Initiative, we couldn't have done this as well. It's really, really positive to see all the good things happening here in Northfield. So thank you.
Thank you.
So we have one other... Of course, we have to acknowledge that tonight is Dr. Richardson's last school board meeting, so we have, of course, have to recognize that. So one thing that we would like to present on behalf of the governor is a certificate of recognition to Dr. Richardson, and this is, was presented to you by the governor, and is presented to Dr. Chris Richardson in recognition of 46 years of excellent service to the field of K-12 education, including 35 years as a superintendent. Your dedication to students has been recognized by your peers when you earned the title of Minnesota Superintendent of the Year in 2012, and received the prestigious Polaris Leadership Award by the Minnesota Association of School Administrators in 2015, excuse me. Therefore, with the appreciation and respect of the people of Minnesota, this certificate is presented by Governor Mark Dayton to Dr. Chris Richardson upon your retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then, on behalf of the board, this is representing a Raider brick.
All right.
We wanted to give you a lasting recognition. So it says, "Dr. Chris Richardson, Superintendent, dedicated service," and gives the years of your service here. And I guess I would just add that we were trying to give you a lasting recognition, and I've been thinking about the sort of lasting legacy that you've left, not just with the programming for the students, but I was thinking about all of the administrators and instructional staff that have been so influenced by you, that the brick hardly recognizes how much that's going to last here. Thank you.
But it is permanent.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you.
You live in infamy in cement.
Or something like cement.
Yeah.
Super, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So any other board members have any comments before we move on? Rob?
So, Chris, I met you for the first time at the first D-PAC meeting in 2004. At that meeting, I heard you say something I've heard you say hundreds of times since then, "Take the 30,000-foot view." But while you've been encouraging people to stay focused on the 30,000-foot view, for the past 12 years, you and your every action have been subjected to almost microscopic scrutiny. Every time a snowflake falls, Northfield watches to see what Chris Richardson is doing.
And so do the surrounding districts.
Of course, this goes with the territory. The people in this community are intelligent and engaged and remarkably generous, and demand excellence and accountability. That's all good, but it demands great strength of character to withstand such intense and unremitting scrutiny, and still remain focused on what matters, delivering educational excellence that empowers all learners to participate in our dynamic world. I'm not always agreed with you, but in my three and a half years of working with you on the school board, and in my four years on D-PAC, I've been absolutely certain of one thing, that as Northfield Superintendent, you have always put service above self. That's what I see, and I hope that's what others will see when they take the 30,000-foot view of your career in Northfield.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nice comments, Rob. I just want to say, you know, thank you for your leadership over the years and your comments, you know, whether you're taking, you know, one position or the other, it was just all very fair, very polished, very professional. We're blessed to have you for the years that we've had you here, and I just wish you a wonderful, restful retirement. And just, I just think that, you know, education for all, and to keep that theme going on, and, you know, whether we agree or disagree on things, I think, you know, continually, I think the school board over the years has had a very good reputation with the community, and I think we can continue that under Matt's reign, and I'm just thankful and grateful for your years, so thank you. Thank you.
Noel?
Dr. Richardson, you arrived in '04, and immediately, you recognized your financial dilemma. And you guided us out of the dilemma, but also led us through several dilemmas, and you did so with setting a great standard for the state in the way that you provide leadership for this district. You did so with professionalism, with grace, and integrity, and we thank you.
Well, I think you have put to rest the joke that the only thing good to come out of Iowa is dirty five. You and I have that in common.
Yes, absolutely.
For the Iowans. As I said to you the other day at our last meeting, I can't think of better words than just to say, sir, it has been an honor to know you and to serve with you on this board, and to have you as superintendent for these lucky kids in Northfield.
Thank you.
Other comments?
And I just want to echo what Rob said, that you're an absolute role model to me, and I know to the rest of us, for putting public service first in your life, year after year after year. I have so much respect for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do I get a...
Yes. A rebuttal?
A rebuttal. I guess I would just like to take a moment to thank you as board members, and the board members that have preceded you, that I have worked with over the years. This has been a great place to work. It has been a great place to work because of the staff that have been here, administrators that have been here, but also, I have had lots of experiences with boards over the years, and I have to say to you that, to a person, you have spent the most time really reflecting and thinking and pondering and contemplating, and I think I'm running out of words, collaborating in terms of thinking about what is the way that we can best help support the needs of our kids, and especially when some of those kids are struggling mightily to be successful. It's one thing to be a board that is there in good times, but it's quite another to be a board that also can handle situations that are difficult. And Noel and others know how interesting that first six months of my first year here were, when we determined that financially, we were headed quickly toward SOD, and we needed to really make a significant change and correction in terms of our direction financially. And then, over the years, my sense has been, although, and I appreciate it, Rob, that not always have board members always agreed, I have never seen any of you not take seriously the ideas that are being presented by myself and by administrators, and really taking the time to learn about them, in some cases, to change your mind and come at it from a different direction. And as a superintendent, that is so important, and I would just say to you, you have, it's been an honor and a pleasure for me to work for you. You've been a wonderful board, and I think a wonderful reflection of the Northfield community, and I just want to thank you for all of your efforts and the continuing efforts going forward. Thanks so much.
Okay. With all that, now I need to move on to the meeting. I wish we could just sit around and...
But we got stuff. We've got my 75-page document.
You took this on purpose, didn't you?
Yeah, you betcha.
Yeah, let's start moving through this stuff. Okay, so we'll begin with items for discussion and reports. We begin with District Curriculum and Staff Development Committee and Professional Learning Communities' presentation. To begin, Mary Grace Hanson, District's Director of Teaching and Learning.
Well, that's a hard act to follow, but we'll do our best. As Dr. Richardson always likes to say, the board and D-PAC take the 30,000-foot view. Well, I'm here tonight to get you, zoom you in a little closer to the ground. Matt, do you have the...
Can you help, Rob? If you...
Okay. So this is a three-part report from the... Would you like the keyboard? Yes. Somewhere.
Just move it over. It's already loaded.
So, well, and there it is. Thank you. Yep. The District Curriculum and Staff Development Committee, otherwise referred to as DCSDC. So you might have to practice that at home to get all those letters in the right order. So, there we go. We meet the second Thursday of each month, and sometimes we have to cancel if the schools are having conferences on those nights, but we meet at least seven times during the year. And we have teachers from each of the buildings, as well as the ALC and Early Childhood and Special Ed that join the committee, and a board member and a parent. The theme for our last year, so this is kind of a two-part report, to give you a review of last year and then looking forward to next year. Our theme for last year centered on understanding poverty, and we did three readings, and had some very lively discussions of these readings. We started with The Glass Castle, which is a memoir of a person, a child, who grew up in poverty. We read Bridges Out of Poverty by Ruby Payne, and ended with Teaching with Poverty in Mind. And Carrie Duba, one of our members, found an article by Eric Jensen, who was published in the journal just last year, and he recommended the other two books. So serendipitously, we did the right thing with our poverty theme. Our theme for 2016-17 for our reading centers on creative thinking and collaboration, and we'll be reading, we'll be starting with The Innovator's Mindset by George Kuros, who was a keynote speaker at TIES, and several members of our staff took an online course from TIES with George Kuros, and then Reading Quiet by Susan Cain, the communication and trying to recognize the introverts we have among our students and staff. For professional learning in your packet, you've got a review of the New Teacher Workshop. Again, we're going to be doing two days of that this year. It has been very helpful to expand to two days. It gives the new teachers a little gentler entry into Northfield than when we tried to push everything into one day. Last year, we also did Common Formative Assessments. We had two days in June with Nicole Vogli for the elementary, and one day during Fall Workshop with the grades 6 through 12. So all of the teachers, K through 12, have been trained in Common Formative Assessments. We did mental health training in two four-hour sessions last year. We did four hours in August and four hours in November for grades 5 through 12. We had literacy professional learning in all of the buildings, and including Greenville Park went and went a little beyond and hired a consultant for four days to strengthen our literacy program. We had a Bridges Out of Poverty workshop for the elementary in January, and we had two-hour sessions at the end of each quarter, which included technology and wellness. The technology speaker was in March, was very highly received, very well praised. Plans for 2016-17, our theme is the four Cs, creative thinking, critical thinking, collaboration, and communication. That kind of is a takeoff from the last century, the three Rs. We are now moving forward to the four Cs. Again, we'll do two days of New Teacher Workshop. The Fall Workshop on November 23rd, as you noticed in your packet, have a little bit different format. It's full of choice. We're giving the teachers a lot of voice and choice. It's kind of a combination of a convention-type format and what we refer to as a planned ed camp. And a lot of the staff have stepped forward and volunteered to do a lot of interesting things, and again, it's a living document that we will keep adding to as we get closer. On November 23rd, we're having Wavelength come in. That's a comedy troupe, actually, out of Chicago, to do either, and DCSDC will make the decision, Seven Habits of Highly Ineffective Educators, or Those Who Laugh Last. And then they will offer two sessions, or four sessions, and we can choose from Communication Skills That Work, Collaboration Versus Competition, and Professional Learning Communities That Connect. Again, all things that go along with our theme of the four Cs. And January 16th is building time, and each building will plan what their specific building needs are. And next year, the other change is that we will not have the two hours of professional learning on the end-of-the-quarter days. Those will be strictly work time. So, to get into the professional learning communities portion of this, DCSDC oversees the professional learning communities as well. We had, we again offered grants that teachers in their professional learning community could apply, and we did a Northern Lights Academy. That is our sixth-grade social studies book, and we sent the two teachers to that. We bought teaching adolescents writing for the middle school Special Ed and EL PLC. And first grade at GVP applied and received three books on guided reading and basic math facts. And family and early childhood education, sent two people to an early childhood conference. And we sent an OT, an occupational therapist, Shannon Flagel, and two kindergarten teachers to a handwriting workshop. So that was the grant section of PLC this year. We had three joint PLCs across the district. DCSDC will look at that and decide what kind of format we want to use for this year to continue the across-district discussion at the elementary level, and the 6-12 discussion at the secondary level. Then, we are looking to kind of give our PLCs a little boost, and one of the first ways we looked at doing that, we formed a subcommittee to look at all of our documents. Previously, they've been in shared folders, and it's been not terribly difficult to get to, but somewhat of a challenge. So this year, the subcommittee, which consisted of one person from each school, and Kim Briskie, we met twice and updated the forms, and Kim will explain that and show you that in just a moment, and then we'll conclude with the fourth-grade PLC from Bridgewater explaining some of the things they do. Does anybody have any questions at this point, before I turn it over to Kim to show you the new format for our documents?
Board members, other questions? Fritz?
I have a lot of questions, but I'm having to stay on the table.
Okay. That's fine.
Other questions about the DCSDC? I had just one question. When you were talking about the grants and the opportunities for staff to go to these workshops, is there an opportunity for them to share what they've learned with their peers?
That's right. If they go to something, that is the focus of it. Some of them apply for books to read, as, you know, to do a book study as a PLC.
Okay, so they're able to do that district-wide with other grade levels and other buildings?
Right.
Okay, good.
Okay, well, then I'll let Kim show you the new PLC forms.
All right. So our goal here with using Google to update our forms is that, whoops, that we would streamline the process for the teachers. So we oftentimes hear about teachers and their PLCs saving a handful of weeks of notes and needing to then go back and update those, and the time that it takes to do that, and then also the time that it takes to do a form like the Evidence of Practice. One of the teachers that previewed this, once we completed this form, said, "This will go from taking two of our PLC meetings to taking us about 15 minutes." And so that's kind of the goal here. So I would say that this document, the Evidence of Practice, is probably, this is where we started. We wanted to start at the end and move ourselves back to the beginning, and so that's where we went. And the way it's set up, all of these questions are required, so actually, I have to put, like, a little gibberish in there to get to anything. But if I choose one of these buildings, it will take me specifically to those goals, or if I choose district-wide, it will take me to the D-PAC goals, so that I can instantly align my PLC work and my PLC's SMART goal with one of the buildings. So we'll use Bridgewater, since they're here tonight. So when I go to Bridgewater, those goals are right there, so our teachers no longer have to go back and go, "What was the wording of our goals?", and find the document that has them, and pull them up and put them in nicely. It's there, you click through it, and then you can align your own PLC SMART goal to that. And then at the end of this, it puts everything into a nice manageable spreadsheet and summarizes some responses for us. So if you pick something like this, you can go and get the goal. It asks you to copy your goal from the beginning of the year. Remember, this is, we're starting at the end, to tell us whether it aligns to reading or math or other. That gives us a trackable piece of data to know how many of our PLCs are working on reading or math, so if they're doing both, they would fill this in twice, which is similar to the information collected right now. They enter in their baseline data, their current data, and then whether or not they've met their SMART goal, and then based on the response there, it takes you to the next step. If you've met it, your goal, it says, "Great, congratulations. What's your next goal?" If you say, "Yes, we've partially met our goal," it asks for what kinds of things you're going to do to continue to work toward your goal. If you have not met your goal, it might ask you also what, let me click that one, what you're going to do next, and it might be, oh, sorry, I didn't fill in my required questions. It might be create a new SMART goal, develop a new way to measure your data that might align better with your goal. Maybe you started out and it wasn't, it didn't quite work the way you thought it was going to, and that's all right, but to just keep moving towards a goal that's going to be your student's increased achievement. So that form is kind of, is nice, because like I said, it streamlines it for the teachers, but in the end, it also gives us a way to know how many of our PLCs are meeting their goals, and how are those goals in reading, are they in math, or are they in a social skill or something like that with the other box. So I would say that's the star of the show. We also did the same thing for SMART goals, so at the start, when you create your SMART goal, a very similar form that you go into, and it asks you for your PLC team, it asks you to create your goal, it gives you those, the same way that the other one does, you pick your school, it lets you align to the building goals, create your SMART goal that way. And then the other beautiful part of these forms is that not only do we get to have the data so that we know what people are working on and how they're doing, we can also set it up so that it kicks out a nice document format of this to the teachers that fill it out, so they will get, you know, like a form letter kind of piece that they don't have to fill in each part, it will be just done. So that's nice, and the same thing with the minutes. We're using Google Drive as opposed to the shared folder, so it's just a live document. You can fill it in from your iPad, and that should streamline the minutes piece for our PLCs as well.
And then to conclude our three-part presentation, we have Adam Danielson and Dana Holden here from Bridgewater, and Adam also was one of the people on the PLC Subcommittee that worked on presenting the form, or redoing the forms. So here are Adam and Dana.
Little game time adjustment here.
All right. All right, so I'm Adam Danielson, this is Dana Holden, we're fourth-grade teachers at Bridgewater. We're going to talk a little bit about how kind of the one-to-one iPad has changed how we've taught this year, and how it's, you know, improved our instruction, held kids more accountable to learning the goals. In full honesty, as a first year, we had one-to-one iPads in the beginning of the year. Dana and I kind of looked at each other, and we're like, "Well, that's really cool, but what are we going to do with it?" So, I mean, that was kind of one of our struggles at the beginning of the year, and as this year, we're no, we're not experts on the things that we're going to talk about, but we've tried a lot of awesome things in our classrooms. We had a great group of kids this year that was willing to take risks and try things with the one-to-one iPad. You know, kind of those PLC questions about how we know if students have learned the skill, and what are we going to do, or how are we going to respond if they have shown they've met the goal, or they have not met the goal, or kind of those questions, essential questions of PLCs that guided us this year.
So with those questions, we then met with our PLC and talked about different ways the one-to-one iPad could be used to meet those goals, and we found basically four different categories. And we found basically four different categories that we use them for. So in the beginning, we often would give a formative assessment. We did this in both reading and math, where we would use an app to gather information. Do they already know this? And then that would guide our instruction. We found a few apps that were useful in the instruction piece. And then we could give the same assessment that was a formative assessment at the end to see apples to apples, were they actually learning what we asked them to learn? We also use the iPad then in some small group reteaching for the students that did not meet the original objective. We tried out lots of different things. This year was about hearing about an app and then trying it ourselves first and then rolling it out to the classroom of 25 and then rolling it back because it didn't go as well as it thought it would. But Adam mentioned we had a great group of kids. And so we were able to quickly figure out what guidelines needed to be in place, what things worked smoothly, which ones weren't maybe worth all the time that it took to get the lesson or the pre-test or whatever on, and which ones were really good. So tonight, we'd like to demonstrate and share just three of the apps that now at this point, we consider an integral part of our instruction. It would be very complicated to try and do what we do without them now.
The first one here is Socratic or Socrative, however you want to say it. And this is easily one that I know as a teacher, I could never go back and, yeah, go ahead. I couldn't think of teaching without using this. This is something we use on a daily basis. Basically with it, you can do a lot of different things. And it'll, every kid has the app, it's a free app. And, yeah.
Stop, you have taken it.
We work together, we know each other. So what students do with their iPads is like you can see my room on the top. If you want to look at the, on your iPad, if you download it, you could go to Danielson21. And even Dana and I could be, like if I created a quiz, Dana could sign in, Dana's class could sign in at the same time if I had loaded that up, and we could do it. Or we could do it all across fourth grade. One easy thing to do is like, there's a quick question. So very regularly, I'll click on quick question and short answer. So we might be reading a book or a story, and we'll be working on, you know, what is the main idea or something like that. And so every kid will end up logging on, what is the main idea? And we can, they can have their name up, not have their name up. And then it'll project up, and we can see everybody's answers. And it'll show like, you know, 21 answers have been submitted. So I have 22 kids in the class, and I got, so some kid has to answer, who has an answer. And then all of a sudden, holds everyone accountable to make sure they answer the question. Honestly, it takes me two seconds, just to quick go to my computer, type the question in, you know, project it, and then the answers come up. There's even a feature on there where you can vote on what the best answer is. My fourth graders love that this year. So that's something really quick.
You don't see their names. They enter their names so we know whose response is whose. But when it's projected on the SMARTboard, we hide their names. And so they can talk about each other's response without knowing who they're talking about. They're not just saying, I like this one because that's my friend, whatever.
Yep.
They don't?
I do it a lot too with math. We do a word problem a day to start math every day, kind of critical thinking type question. So it'll show all the answers up again, no names are shown, so, you know, kids can make a mistake. But then we can talk about different answers, how, why people thought, you know, this is the answer, one answer, and then we can come up with what our correct answer was. So it's really neat, holds everyone accountable, like I said, to answer the question where, you know, in the past, I'd do the same thing, and a kid would be working on a whiteboard or scratch you a paper. He didn't know if every single kid was doing exactly what they were supposed to be doing. Now I make sure that every kid has answered those problems.
The same few would always volunteer to share their answers, but this way, everybody's answer is displayed anonymously.
Yeah. The other thing that's great with it is you can create quizzes, whether pre-assessment, post-assessments. So we'll just show you one quickly.
If you did have this on your iPad and wanted to do it right now? This is one of the things we liked about this, is the kids don't have to make an account. They don't have to have an iPad login password. They just go to ClassKick and put in Danielson21, and there where we have them. We see live results, and it color codes right around answers. And then we can download it all to Google Drive. I'm hugging your slides, sorry. And so we've found that it just really is easy, and the creation of the quizzes is easy too. So here, since we don't have folks in there, we can click on what each question is. So this was a multiple choice. It was easy to type in the question, assign it. And then what we can do with the students is click how do we do? And it will show the percent that got it right, the percent that chose something else. So that's kind of neat. Here, it's just telling us what the right answer is. And so we can go through the whole test this way. And then again, talk about why is this, why did people choose this answer? And they'll say, oh, because they didn't see the part about multiples, they were thinking factors, whatever.
And like Dana said, it's color-coded, so like as a teacher, I could be sitting on my iPad. Kids are doing a quiz, like we'll do a lot of review quizzes before, like a math test. And they'll show, if they get it incorrect, it'll show up red, and I'll see their student's name. And we can do it where, the math's in. So if it shows up, they get an incorrect answer, they'll see it, and they have to come right up to me, and then we can reteach it right to them on the spot. Or I might have a group quick that I can reteach it to that don't understand, you know, how to greater than less than problems or whatever it might be. So it's been really awesome to just, you know, again, the accountability piece with kids, but then also just to make sure you're hitting all of those kids and making sure you're reteaching those skills to kids that don't understand it, so.
And we can also then, at the bottom, it'll show the percentage. So if we have a question that, you know, a lot of kids missed, we can look at that. How we wrote the question, is it an area we need to readdress? So that's.
Did we accidentally put in the wrong answer? Which has happened.
So then, right when we finish a live quiz, then we have the choice of getting a report, and it will be added to our Google Drive or emailed to us. Or viewing the chart, and it will show all the colors and the names and whatnot there.
So. Move on to, yeah, yeah.
Another app that we, wait, we were going to give Robert Garcia credit.
Yes.
It was at a joint PLC that we learned about ClassKick from Robert Garcia, and I think Socratic, maybe.
Yes.
He always has cool things. So ClassKick is another app that we can create things. This one, we used more for instruction or checking as they're working, an area that we did a lot. And if you wanted to quick download this and enter that code, you could, and you'd be live on an end-of-the-year assessment that, or practice that we made. And the thing that's nice about this is basically I would take, thank you. So this is my iPad. What I would do is take a photo of our, the everyday math, of the year assessment, and break it up. And then I do have a code called SchoolLord if you want to join. And what, this was a great learning opportunity for them to learn the difference between a zero and an O in digital format. So they now know that that slant through it makes it an O. So it's ORJS27. And then you see I have four slides. The first slide is our WELT statement that we are learning to. And usually, it's much more specific, but at the end of the year, we just wanted to say they're demonstrating what they've learned. And then really high-quality, my photo that I took just has an opportunity for them. Now what's cool is I can view the student work. And here you can see, like this is all of my kids that, when they did it. And you see what's on their iPad. But if I change this, I have no students. That's okay. What's neat is if you're in here, you could be writing on it, and I can be seeing as you're writing and then responding. There is a feature, you see in the top-left corner, a little hand. It's telling me I have no hands raised. But what kids would do is when they finished a page, they tap a little hand button, and that's virtually raising their hand. They choose please help or please check. And then, sweet, my turn. So if you could go to the second slide and then even just start writing on there, a smiley face or something, I can see what he has. So you're seeing live what he's got. And then down, I think it's in the bottom, there should be a little hand. Do you see a hand icon? And then you, so now he's asked me for help, and just like that, whoop, he took that away. Okay, now he wants me to check it. So then I tap on his name, there it is. I have scheduled it so like I can just put a star next to it and go faster like that. I have a squirrel that says try again. But the other thing I can do is write, you know, underline something. Or I can say, you know, when we were doing fractions, equivalent fractions, and they had a question on that, I might say, well, two-thirds equals blank-sixth. And then I remind them, like, this is how we did it, so what goes here? And the kids would write, thank you, and, you know, it was cool. Something we tinkered with, there's an option to let kids help each other. And when that happens, they don't know who's asking them for help. It says a confused cat needs help with number one or something. But the confused cat knows who's helping them. So when I need help at the top of my page, you probably saw a teacher helping. If Adam was another student and he was helping me, I would know who it was. It was Adam, but he wouldn't know that I was the one he was helping. So really good with the immediate feedback. And it's amazing how excited they were to do their everyday math boxes when we just put it on here. Like, it's the same thing, but.
And with putting stars on there, it's super easy as a teacher to go to make sure everyone on your class roster has finished the page out. So and Nancy was in everyone time for an observation while we were doing it. It was dead silent for like 20 minutes. And, but kids were interacting with each other. I was interacting with kids, and I was just on my iPad, just, you know, doing it in a different way than we did before with our kids lined up and waiting for me to meet with them. I was just doing it through the iPad.
And then we have other things. So when they finish their work and their hand is raised, they can go on to extra math. Or another app we use this year is called Front Row. And so they were always being actively working, even if they were waiting for us to respond or check something.
And the last one, Seesaw, we're talking about. It's an online journal. A couple kindergarten teachers went to a TIES conference and learned about it. And then I kind of picked up from that and got it, started trying it. I thought it'd be really cool to have something, another communication tool with parents. Basically, each kid gets a QR code that you send home with the parent, they scan it. There's also a web-based way of doing it. I probably, my 22 kids, I think I had 19 of the 22 of the parents sign up for it. And I, I think I started January, February time by March conferences. All the ones that had signed up to it had all said, wow, that's really awesome. They loved it. I basically just started with it, they could take pictures.
I don't know your password.
So it's just an online journal here, and you can see some of the things that I posted up there. So there's a QR code that goes home. And parents could share it with like a grandparent or things like that, but no one else can see it. Everything the kids post goes through me first, and then I approve it to send it out. So I, I've taken pictures and sent it out to, you know, parents, things like that. So a communication tool, they can do projects and easily put it out there for mom and dad to see it. So we did a lot of different things with it. And after we, I just started doing like some writing assignments, things like that, sending it home. I started thinking about ways, yeah. You can also, I was thinking about ways, you know, like you had to do it as an assessment tool, too. So we're going to show you a little video, approve the parents said we could show. The parents said we could show this video. But basically, like, we're learning equivalent fractions. So I had all the kids take a video, and at a whiteboard of showing how they could show equivalent fractions. I was able then to see all the videos, and, you know, I had a couple of kids that didn't fully understand equivalent fractions based on their video. So then I was able to form a reteaching group on that, and then they would, yeah, that's it, yep. So you can see they had fun with it too. So they had a lot of fun with it, making those videos. And then they were able to show their parents, and I approved it, said, yeah, this kid gets it. Approved to the parents, the parents see, oh, this is something we're working on in school, this is an important topic. I did it when we were learning division too. It's like when we did the long division algorithm, they had to do a quick 20, 30-second video showing a division problem. And then I quickly went through all of them, watched them, and could see, oh, this kid gets it, this kid gets it. Oh, this kid doesn't get it, I need to reteach them the skills. And it was super easy. And then, like I said, it shows the parents that learning division algorithm is one of our important topics this year. I didn't do it with everything, you know, just specific skills that I thought were essential for the kids to know. So Seesaw is something that, like I said, had so many parents loved it and gave me compliments, like I created something awesome, and I just heard about it, so.
Any questions about any of these?
Thank you, that was an amazing presentation. Board members, questions?
We were going to have iPads for each of you with everything already on, but we wiped all our iPads for the summer.
Questions, board members have? Ellen?
So I had a question about, you, you said during the presentation, I wrote down, how is this changing instruction? And then you said you identify groups and then you can reteach the topic. I'm curious, now you have sort of all this data from all these formative assessments and all these things that you've tried. Are you, are you kind of taking stock? I mean, how are you going to use that going forward next year? It seems like you've tried so many things, and you've got some sort of really successful strategies. I'm just really curious, what's the next, what's the next step?
We're not 100% sure what the next step is. I'm sure there'll be more apps and more things that we'll be trying next year. We now sort of have a group as to which apps work best for which things we're trying. We know that Socratic or Socrative is great for assessment pieces. We know that ClassKick is great when we are interacting while we're instructing. And we know Seesaw is a great piece for them to show what they've learned, but also share and engage families. So we aren't sure what's next.
I think it just feels good to be comfortable with some of the things that we've tried this year. Because this year was a little bit of just kind of throwing things out there. Like Dana said, some things were just a complete mess when we tried it with kids, and we aren't going to do those. These are just things that we found is really easy and beneficial for the kids, so.
Great.
Yeah, we'll still find stuff, but, you know, these are definitely things that we.
I was just so struck by how you're able to get engagement, you know, those quiet kids that might be in the corner can't, can't be like that, but they're probably much more comfortable in the. So I guess I was just really struck with how well the strategies you presented really turned things around. Yeah, thank you.
Board members, other questions or comments?
I have a backwards question, I agree.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
And this is maybe not, this is maybe not the right forum for this. And we should have you back for a follow-up on it. But my question is basically, are you able to give a potted history of PLCs, what there was before PLCs, and what the trade-offs are of doing the late start PLCs versus what happened before?
I'm really not prepared to talk about that because since I've been here, that's been the modus operandi.
It's probably not a five-minute conversation.
Right.
So we'll table that for now. That's basically what my question comes to.
Okay. And I don't, you heard Dana and Adam talk about Seesaw. And again, that came from two teachers attending TIES who came back and shared it with Bridgewater staff because they both happen to be at Bridgewater. They happen to be kindergarten teachers and they shared it at a joint PLC with the district kindergarten teachers. And if you read your fall workshop schedule very, very carefully, you'll notice that they're going to present it several times as a choice for the entire staff K- pre-K-12. So that's one way that, from going to TIES, that we have with two people and have spread it across the district. So, so, thank you.
Board members, other questions?
One question for Kim, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
I was curious with the, when you were presenting the forms, one thing that struck me is at DPAC, we've spent some of the year kind of trying, and in last year, too, actually thinking about how are the DPAC goals ending up in buildings and ending up in PLCs. And it just struck me that the form, the way you're gathering the information from the forms, it might become easier for us to see, is our DPAC goals having an influence or which ones seem to get legs? And, because we always struggle with, is it because we're writing them and then, you know, so, so 30,000 foot that people can't figure out how to put them on the ground? Or are they just, just not the right goal? So I, I don't know if you've thought about how that would.
Yes, I have thought about that. I am a person who seeks alignment in just about everything. I'm one of those people who looks at the big mission, vision, and how do we walk that out? How do we define it in each location? And so those DPAC goals, like, as we were crafting those this year and changing the wording over and over again, I was looking at Mary Grace going, how is this going to work in my form? How am I ever going to do this now? But the, the place where those DPAC goals, I think, should go first is into that site improvement planning process that then should walk out in those building goals. And if you are choosing to align directly, I mean, everybody needs to go for their, for their building goal, but there is also that option of, I am a PLC that is not in one building and I'm going to go directly to those DPAC goals. And then those are listed there. And if you were poking around in the SMART goal form, you would end up at the DPAC goals if you went to the district-wide ones. And so it is one more place that makes them a little bit more visible. It makes them really easy to select as an option. So there's
Thank you.
You bet.
And the data's all right there now, too, in one location where before, you know, Fritz and our committee in DPAC spend a lot of time going back through pieces of paper and all this. And now you'll have one central location with all the goals, how they align. So the data analysis part to bring clarity will be infinitely easier. And I think you'll have better data, too, because whenever you have a Word form, people can take some creative liberties. And I'm all for creative liberties in lots of spots, but this is not one of them because we want to have some consistent information about what PLCs are doing, what their goals are. And when you put it into this format where people are required to complete things in a certain way, I think the data is going to be cleaner, which I think will really help.
Board members, other questions? Rob?
This is, I guess, kind of a follow-up on Ellen's question earlier about what's next. Because I used to hear a lot about the SAMR model and I haven't heard much about it recently. And I'm just wondering if you, I mean, when you gave that presentation, it looked like it sort of filled some of each of those parts. And if you think about the SAMR model, where you are on that, or whether it doesn't really make sense because these apps are doing all four things at the same time.
I'll just say, because I was the original SAMR person, Kim, if you want to, you know, if you think about when we first started looking at providing students with digital devices to accelerate and personalize their learning, we were among the first wave in the nation to do this, and especially with a tablet. So we were using what we thought was the best framework at the time, which was Dr. Puntadaro's SAMR model. Since then, I think we have looked at the SAMR model in a number of different ways. We used to use it as a ladder, if you remember, there was kind of a pyramid. Then there was the next visual of it being a pool. We've even seen SAMR looked at as coffee, different kinds of coffee. But at the end of the day, that was about trying to give people a visual. And the goal is, and I think, as you might imagine, I have a little bit of personal gratification here this evening, hearing what these outstanding teachers have done because the SAMR model is no, is there's some automaticity in now what is happening. They're not thinking about what part of the SAMR model, they're thinking about their kids. And they're thinking about what's the best way for me to engage my students, get the feedback that we need from students, and then adjust our teaching, which was always the point. We had to have some kind of way to provide a framework for folks. But the goal was always that, if you really think about it, the old way you'd think about it in technology integration, you would think about it at the end, you were something you would call, I am unconsciously aware, which means that I am using technology without even thinking about it. And what I really appreciate about Dana and Adam's presentation at the beginning of the year, they were thinking about it, but they now have a strategy of how to try things out, how to be okay if something didn't work. It's action research at its finest. And what I was struck is if you really think about what I think the gold standard of looking at instructional practices, it's John Hattie's work around visible learning. And I could tick off about six or seven things in the top 25 options of what Dr. Hattie says are effective instruction. For example, feedback. There's absolutely no way you provided the feedback to all 25 or 50 of your students in the time that you did without the technology. If that is not redefinition, I don't know what is because they can replicate themselves essentially 25 times to do that. If you think about teacher clarity, they talk to you about listening or looking at the data right then and say, oh, my goodness, we might need to come back and reframe this. Maybe the question wasn't quite right or right. Teacher clarity from a number of research pieces shows that that's a huge piece in student achievement. We talk about micro-teaching in terms of teaching a very specific skill. They listed off probably six or eight different pedagogical approaches that Dr. Hattie identifies as high quality. And I'm not guessing that they went to visible learning and said, we should do these 10 things. They did it because it was good for kids and they had the tools available to do it. So I just cannot say enough about what you have shared with us tonight because it is everything that I had personally hoped for when we put all that time in to try to get people digital devices that could help accelerate student learning. And there are some pitfalls along the way, as you found. But they're also modeling growth mindset, another huge thing, because there were some things that didn't work and they weren't really all that upset about it. They probably were at the time, but, you know, not too upset about it. So thank you for being good models for what I think is some of the best practice that we should do our best to replicate throughout the district. And you also heard joint PLCs, that they got the idea from somebody else and made it their own. So I could take about an hour from here, so I'll be quiet. So thank you to both of you. Really well done.
Okay. Board members, are there other questions or comments? I'll just close by thanking Dana and Adam and Nancy for being here tonight. And I think it was absolutely the perfect presentation for us to hear, you know, when the, with the one-on-one for fourth and fifth grade, as a board, we had an opportunity when buildings came forward with their site improvement plans. But that was really early on in the, in the fall season. So there wasn't really a lot of information yet. So this was absolutely amazing presentation. And just really thank you for the work you did on it and for being here on June 13. So we wish you guys a great summer and we thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So our next item for discussion is the Director of Administrative Services position. Dr. Hillman is doing that presentation.
So in your packet, I provided, give me a little feedback here. In your packet, there was a memo outlining, looking at how we might consider the Director of Administrative Services position that I built in the last several years moving forward. Not going to go into all of the details of everything that you had in your narrative, but I will provide a summary. And so, as you might imagine, since I was selected to be the superintendent, we've been thinking a lot about how would we move forward with our district leadership team. And after considerable feedback from a number of different stakeholders and what my belief is really looking at the, the likeliness, the likelihood of budget reductions for the 2017-18 school year, it's, I believe it's my recommendation to you to leave that Director of Administrative Services position unfilled for the 2017-18 school year. And when we suggest leaving that position unfilled, there's a couple of pieces that we would need to do with some of the savings from the position in order to bolster a couple of positions, to reflect the new responsibilities that they would be required to do. We also have a small portion that I'm going to ask you to actually consider tonight within our Technology Services Department. And then really, at the end of the day, we will hold a significant amount of the savings in the district administrative budget for the purposes of offsetting the likely budget reductions for the 2017-18 school year. So when we look at the piece, and what the first component would be that the duties from the Director of Administrative Services position would really be filled by a handful of different individuals. There are a few pieces that I would maintain in terms of going to the superintendency, a few things, some coaching of principals, some of those kinds of things that I've been doing and would continue to do. There are some pieces that would go to the Director of Human Resources position. And there are some pieces of that job description that would go to the Director of Finance position. When we add those duties to the Director of Finance and to the Director of Human Resources, it will raise the complexity of their jobs and it will also provide them more authority than their current job descriptions offer them. And so when we look at that combination, we need to look at a reasonable salary modification to reflect those new and more complex duties. So what we did is we did an analysis of the big nine. And even with the suggested increases for those two positions, which totaled right around $32,000, those two positions would still be in the bottom two of the position, likely positions in the big nine. So when you sort those positions in the big nine by salary, even though they have a pretty reasonable increase to reflect those additional and more complex duties, they are still paid toward the bottom of the big nine. I'm not using that to say, you know, to point that out, other than the fact that it's reasonable in terms of when we compare to those school districts that are like us in our athletic, in our athletic conference. The second piece would be that the Technology Services Department has an opportunity right now to do some reorganization. I've got Kim here who will answer any questions, too, about this. But we're not changing the number of people that we have within the Technology Services Department, but realigning their job expectations in order to reflect what current practices are. So we currently have basically three positions within the Technology Services Department. We have a network manager, we have a technology specialist, and we have a workstation specialist. Under the suggestion that we're bringing forward, and Kim has worked on this for several months, we would basically take one of the current technology specialist positions and transfer that into what we call an assistant network manager position. Now, you might recall, we talked about this during the PALS presentation because we then would move the salary for that position from the general fund into the operating capital fund. This kind of position is one of the very few in the district that can be paid for by operating capital because of the fact that it actually maintains equipment, technology from that is purchased with capital dollars. That helped us pay for the general fund portion of the PALS position for next year, those three PALS positions. The other piece is that we happen to have a resignation from one of our workstation specialists, and we also have a retirement in one of our technology specialists. And to also reflect how things have changed since, we need to remind you, we put 3,600 additional devices about that and did not increase our technicians at all. So just think about that for a second. It's, it's a pretty significant increase in the number of, it's a little less than that.
It's very close to that.
Okay. So what we're looking at is looking at merging the current technology specialist and current workstation specialist roles into one, recognizing that there isn't really a level one tech support anymore, a level two. Kids want help from whomever they are trying to get help from. And to do that, what we would do is that sal, the assistant network manager salary would stay at the current tech specialist salary, what they are currently being paid. And then we would modify the salary of this new technology specialist position that's a merger of the workstation specialist and the technology specialist to a salary that's in between those current salaries, roughly $52,400 for a year-round position. That allows us to be competitive in the technology, the tech support marketplace, which we know is getting back to being extremely competitive. That total cost would be about $21,000. So by not replacing the Director of Administrative Services and also the difference between the two superintendent salaries, we have a savings of about $180,000. After those three things that I just mentioned, the change to the Director of HR, the change to the Director of Finance, and the modifications to Technology Services, we would realize a savings of $127,000 approximately that we would withhold and put into, hold in the district administrative budget so that it would be an opportunity to offset budget reductions for the 2017-18 school year. So we would actually be making an administrative cut before we're making other cuts. We'd be holding the money so that the cut would come at a later date. And if we have some kind of miracle where the state comes through, we're waiting for it to happen, if the state were to come through, then we would still have that money in the budget and be able to use it appropriately. But if they do not come through and we do need to make budget adjustments for 2017-18, we have this $127,000 head start. So when I really think about it, the key piece is over the last several years, we've been working really hard with our district services leadership team and our folks have really stepped up. And both our Director of HR, Molly Deeselman, and our Director of Finance, Val Mursthorff, I really believe are ready to lead those day-to-day pieces and have that additional authority. I, we could not put them in those positions and expect them, right now, they're paid 20% below the mean of the big nine. And even after this, they'd still be paid about 5% below the mean of the big nine. So I just think those pieces are really important to share with that savings. And as we move forward, I think the key thing is, I, later in the agenda, we would ask you to consider making the changes to the Technology Services positions this evening because we would like to get those hired. And don't feel we can hire them, we've got them posted, but don't feel we can hire them until we have your authority. And then we'd come back in the July meeting to ask you to authorize the other two changes in our normal fashion of giving you some information one month and then asking you to vote on it the next month. So that's a summary. Are there questions that I might be able to answer?
Board members' questions. Ellen?
This is probably a stupid question, but I'm, I'm just looking at the order that we're voting on things. And then you talked about in July. So the first thing under individual action is a proposed budget. And then these things that you're proposing, how are those being reflected? Because we're voting on that as the first item for information. Number six is technology. And then you're talking about the other thing being in July. So maybe I'm just not.
So Val, the $21,000 you've got projected in the budget for next year, correct?
Nope.
Okay. Explain how the budget piece worked then, Val.
Typically, the budget that you approve is everything that I have presented to date. And anything that happens after that point comes in the revised budget.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Is that helpful?
And the key thing is, I think that, you know, that $180,000 is already part of that overall budget. So we're, we're not adding things. We're actually just withholding part of it.
Really creating a fund balance in the district administration so that when and if cuts have to come, you have the ability to make those cuts without impacting the new structure with the superintendent in place and the other positions in place. I think it's going to be very important for you if you get to that point where you're having to start making significant cuts again, not to, at that point, then undo the structure that's been created to go forward.
Do these two professionals, because I'm imagining these duties that would be reassigned are not insignificant, do they have time in their FTE to take on these, this reassignment?
We, as we have looked at, they have both assured me that they are able to handle the duties as presented.
Truly. Okay.
Other questions? Fritz? Oh, Rob, sorry.
I'm just looking ahead to the budget presentation also and looking at the expenditures by program. And you've got, the administration accounts for 3.5% of the total general fund. So does this change that percentage? Or is something going out of administration into some other portion of that budget?
So there's a portion of it, and Val, correct me if I'm wrong, but the portion of it would be still administrative jobs, right? And the entirety would be held within the budget. So it would be, some of it would be unspent. So it would still be recognized in the budget, but it would be unspent at that point. Now, the Technology Services is being changed this year to the instructional support component.
Yep. Yep. So I did miss, the 20,000 is in there because you're taking it from what we won't be spending and just shifting it. So that shift will look different. So that number will come down a little bit. So that shift will look different, so that number will come down a little bit. But the administrative, sorry, I'm trying to find the page that has that on there. So the administrat, and it's just like Matt said, Dr., the amount will stay there, but will just come in under budget essentially, if that makes sense, because we don't want to, it'll need to be there for the 17-18 process.
And it actually has, and I think that's the other positive potential, by putting it in and holding it in the balance, basically, you save money for the 2016-17 year, which helps to increase your fund balance before whatever expenditures are done. And then in the following year, if you do make those cuts at that point in time, it becomes the strategy for reducing the district administrative costs. I would also say, when you think about the percentage, again, of district administration, we are the lowest in the big nine, and we are significantly lower than our surrounding districts in terms of the percentage of our budget that funds district administration. So that's never been an issue for us in terms of where we are.
Well, and I think the other piece is that, you know, we say that as a stewardship piece, but it also, I mean, our administrators work incredibly hard, and I think that that's just a, it's a way we're able to do it. People are really leaving it all on the floor, for lack of a better term, because we are making it work with a lower percentage of our budget being administrative, which for years, we've come in, you know, with that, was it 80% that Governor Plente wanted the target? For years, we've blown that away, and one of the reasons is that we have been very lean with our administrative costs.
And just to clarify, the Director of Administrative Services position is in the District Support Services on the general administrative support line, so that's part of that dollar amount. So just, the administration is a separate category, so.
Ben, can I, just for clarification, just in general, I mean, it says for District Support Services offices such as Human Resources, Finance, Communication, so...
Yep.
Some of the increased compensation for you and...
Yep. It'll shift from that line up to HR and Finance.
Right. Okay.
And then...
So it is going out of administration, but it's, kind of looks like the same thing to...
Yeah. So some of it will stay, you know, it'll all, the parts for the Director of HR and the Director of Finance will stay in that District Support Services category, and the $20,000 for the technology changes would move up to the Student Support Services category because the, my general fund presentation, that the Tech Services Department is now classified as instructional technology, which is a UFR change, and so that's now, I think that I might even have a, yeah, instructional technology is just a line in there. So that will move there, and the rest would just sit on that line for a general administrative support as a, just as a budget line item that we're not spending.
Okay. So the administration is just superintendent, school board, and principals? That's what's technically...
Yeah, that's the first part, that's the one part that is identified in that way, yes. And those are not driven by us, those are driven by the UFR system.
Yes.
They said all.
Fritz?
And I, I think I'm comfortable with this anyway, but it's just as well to ask it explicitly, that voting in favor of these, of the technology shift, what effect, if any, does that have on the option value of hiring a Director of Administrative Services if we decide we need one? If we decide we need one, and we decide that we choose to afford one?
Well, I think we would just, we would make that decision at that point, understanding that we had already committed to that movement, but any support, if we were to choose to come back, that support could come back and look different than it does now. The school administration reinvents itself over time to address what the current needs are, and so if there was a, if we had a magic windfall and there was a decision to bring it back in some way, shape, or form, it might look different than the role that I fulfilled supporting Chris.
But the $21,00, tonight's $21,000 is that the end of the option of approximately hiring a, hiring a one-up replacement for what has been your job?
It would remove that savings. Now, not all of the savings that we're suggesting comes from removing my position, because Dr. Richardson's been a superintendent for 35 years, so he has made a little bit more money than I have, and so there's part of that $180,000 savings is the difference between our salaries. And so it wouldn't, then the Director of Administrative Services salary does not include that entirety, includes that plus the savings between the two salaries. So we would, we would lose some of the savings should we not choose to move forward with this plan, but you move forward with the tax part.
That's a reminder, that clear question. Thank you.
Good question. Any board members, any other questions? Okay. So we'll move on then and we address, or address that piece and item for individual action. So we will move on now to the legislative wrap-up. Dr. Richardson, and a reminder to board members, there was an updated version, or a version from MDE in our table file, which...
And what I'd like to do tonight is just basically give you a 30,000-foot view, okay? And I think to frame that, and so I'm not going to start with, on page one, we have, because it would be a long time until we got to page 37. I think that the key thing that I think people need to understand about this particular legislative session, it was very, very different. I guess that's a kind way of describing it. You had a situation where before the session started, we believed we had a $1.2 billion surplus, and then there was a hiccup in terms of the forecast, and we came down to only having a $900 million surplus, which is probably one of the largest surpluses that the state has ever seen, even though it was not $1.3 billion. At the same time, we have to realize that part of that $900 million surplus was caused by the fact that there were major bills in terms of taxes and transportation that weren't dealt with in the last session. And so there was the appetite and the desire to try to deal with those particular pieces, and unfortunately, one of those pieces did not get addressed at all, and the second piece was passed only to be vetoed by the governor. So as we look at this piece going forward, I think you have to just kind of put everything in that frame. I think the other thing is, I learned over the years in working with legislators, that in years when they don't believe they have any money, for whatever reason, there tends to be no policy topic that they aren't willing to talk about. And in many cases in this session, not only did they talk about them, but they passed them into law. And so a lot of the things that we're going to be dealing with as a school district and school districts around the state are dealing with is the fact that you have a bunch of additional things that they believe were not going to cost anything, but in fact, are going to cost a lot in terms of just manpower and staff time and so on to get the work done. So let's talk about just a couple of the highlights in terms of finances. And I'm going to work, I think, from this document. I've given you the other pieces in advance, and they have a very similar flavor, but this is Tom Melcher, who we all believe is the guru of school finance, and I think can really kind of, in a very, very organized way, as Kim would say, very structured, very, very tightly organized, kind of shares where things are. We look at the second page of this document, the key important thing that you see is the percentage increase that came out of this session, 0.2%. So when we looked at supplemental funding and increases for schools, it was a 0.2% increase. Now, remember that in the past, with supplemental budgets, we've often received an additional 1% or even more, as legislators tried to address the fact that, again, for the last 20-plus years, we've not kept up with inflation. And even with the 2% and 2% in this current biennium, we aren't doing anything to address the loss of funding, and we know that if we go back to 1991-92 and we'd say, we'd like the same amount of buying power in 2016 as we had in 1991-92, we'd have to add $2,400 per pupil to the existing formula. Well, there was definitely not anywhere near $2,400 expended. In fact, there was almost nothing, 2/10 of a percent. If we look at the tax bill first, which I again understand that was vetoed, or the pocket veto, we know that that had the potential to support our district and every other district in the state that had ag land. And so if you take a look on page three, you notice that the bill that was vetoed would have given a 40% tax capacity reduction to the school general debt service tax rate. For us, that would have meant a $293,000 reduction to property taxpayers who are ag owners, and its amounts to 6.1% of the debt service levy. So because that is no longer in place, at this point, none of that savings is there. So we are waiting, and I think there are some hopes that there will be an attempt to resurrect the tax bill and to make modifications. As you know, the governor's key issue there was there was a, basically, a significant mistake made by the revisers when they put the bill together. They left a word out, and it was a $100 million mistake. And so the governor's saying, I won't sign this unless that gets fixed. So we're waiting to see if that ends up coming back on the table. The only way it can come back on the table right now is if the governor and legislative leaders can come to some agreement to do a special session, and that hasn't happened so far. If we take a look on page five, you'll see that there is some significant spending in early learning, a $25 million amount. Basically, that's being used to really begin the process of having districts look at the idea of doing preschool programming for four-year-olds. It's a funding model that is formula-driven, so if you're able to apply and receive funding for this, you could get up to 0.6 FTE a pupil unit for each student, depending on the number of hours of programming that you provided. There's requirements in terms of what's expected, and those include not only how many hours, but what kinds of ratios you can have, and also some things that are going to be a little difficult for most districts, and that is that preschool teachers would have to be paid on the same contract basis as K-12 teachers, as opposed to a percentage of or portion of. In terms of that voluntary kindergarten, if you look at the bottom of page six, the key thing to remember here is that $25 to $26 million, we're talking about 6.2% of the four-year-olds in the state, about 3,700 kids. So it really is just a drop in the bucket. And you'll notice that they made the decision to break the money into four buckets. So you have, originally, they said up to 25% went to Minneapolis and St. Paul, 25% to metro suburban districts, 25% for non-metro districts, and 25% for charters. When they got done playing with the numbers, the numbers at the bottom of page six are the more accurate numbers. So 10% of the budget could go to Minneapolis-St. Paul, another 40% go to metro suburban districts, 43% go to all the other districts in the state, and then 7% go to charter schools. So if you think about it, if you're looking at 43%, that's about 1,600 students across the entire state other than in the metro. And of course, as with anything else of this type, the deadline for the first application is the first of July. We are looking at this right now, and I've had Aaron looking at it already and some other folks looking at it already. I think one of the key issues that we're facing as we're looking at this particular program is that there's a formula that determines whether you have your priority in terms of being funded, and that's based on the concentration of kindergarten students that are eligible for free and reduced-price lunch, and how close you are to three- and four-star rated parent where programs. Well, guess what? Every building in our district is within two miles of a three- or four-star rated program, and we run one. So we get no points at all for that, and only districts that get additional points for that are those where they're 10 to 20 or more miles away for that program. And the second piece is free and reduced-price lunch. And you think about, basically, Greenville Park in our district, which has the largest percentage of free and reduced-price lunch at about 40%. We are three or four pages into the document before we get to our schools. What I was told by Tom Melcher this morning is, unless you have about, a building that has about 70% free and reduced-price lunch, you probably are not going to be funded. So we're taking a really hard look at this. The only thing we don't know is, will there be a number of districts that choose not to do so? And the other issue we have is, currently, we have no space. We can provide the program off-site, so we could lease levy and actually create a space for it. We could, we don't have to do it in the building. The other reality is there would only be one building that would have any chance of getting any resources, and that would be Greenville Park. So if we go on, let's take a look at the next piece, which is equity revenue, which is on page nine. And I think the key part there is, if you remember a few years ago, our good friend, legislator from the Farmington area, made the decision that Northfield would be the only district in, that had previously been a metro equity district, that it would no longer be a metro equity district. And it was basically because of the location of the administrative headquarters of the district. So even though we have a portion of our district in Dakota County, which is part of the metro, we also have part of our district in Goodhue and part of our district in Rice. And so, you know, we were denied the ability to get any of the metro equity funding, even though we have all the same issues that anybody else to the north of us. If you think about Randolph, would Rand, does Randolph have more issues in terms of metro equity than we do? Probably not. So this will provide us a little bit of additional dollars. They're saying about $15 per pupil of additional equity revenue, that'll go up to $23 a pupil by 2019-20. So that has some positives going forward. On page 10, the important piece there is the support staff grants. Again, they're just putting their toe in the water. They're saying, we know that we have the lowest or the highest ratio of kids to counselors in the country. We don't have nearly enough counselors, social workers, psychologists, chemical counselors, whatever, but what we're going to do is give enough money so that we could hire 60 to 65 positions, as long as districts are willing to share the cost equally with the state. And the money that they have appropriated, the 12 million, uniquely and very differently than we've ever had before, almost always typically when these kinds of grants are done, they're done for a one-year or two-year period. These are actually spread out over the entire six years. And so that $12 million is really spread out over the entire six-year period, which typically means that if you don't get in on the ground floor in terms of that piece, you're not going to get any money. The advantage we have here is we're looking at, currently, at our PALS positions and thinking about the fact that they might in fact qualify. So we're going to take a look at this very seriously. Problem again is, this is funding that starts for it right now, within the next two weeks. However, there's no application at all, and they're not even sure exactly when they will have an application ready. The advantage, though, is because these positions were created after the fall of 2015-16, they would be eligible if everything aligned appropriately, and that would give us an opportunity to pick up some of the cost of the PALS program. So that has some real benefits. Okay. If we go on to page 13, you'll see some information on Q-COP, and you know that we're again having our association rethink... that we are, again, having our association rethinking or relooking at the fact of not wanting to be involved in Q-COP and choosing to not vote to do so. We had hoped that there would be an effort on the part of the legislature this year to significantly add to Q-COP. Instead, basically, they added just enough money to get the last two districts in that had already been approved for the program and to actually fund them at their full rate. So there really is no additional money for any other Q-COP districts who would want to come in. So we'll see how that piece goes. You'll see at the bottom of the page on 13, there are several different workforce packages. And while there are some that are very tightly focused on certain areas or certain programs, you'll see that there are dollars in terms of teacher loan forgiveness and student-teacher support that have some potential of supporting teachers who are going through student teaching and who are working on entering the teaching profession, and we need to continue to support that piece happening. So that's a positive piece. As part of that, then, those two pieces are probably the most appropriate for us. Some of the others, one of the other ones that generated quite a bit of money at $3 million is the Northwest Regional Partnership, for which we have no ability to get any money from it. In terms of special education, you'll see that the information on page 16 talks about paperwork reduction. As we talk to the folks at MDE, they have no idea how they're going to do that. And the money that they had appropriated to work on paperwork reduction, the legislature took away. So it's not only reduce your paperwork, but we're not going to give you any money to figure out how to do that. They also are doing some more with positive behavioral interventions, which is great, but we don't have access to any of that money because we already are in the program. Then we go on to page 18 in terms of facilities and technology. A positive piece, and again, this is just very much putting your toe in the water, but beginning in FY 2018, they will be indexing equalizing factors for tier-one and two equalization so that when you index it, it means as the inflationary cost of, in terms of the valuation of property in districts goes up, the ability to get debt service equalization will go up at the same rate. That has been the big problem of debt service equalization. If we go back in this district and many others, and we go back 15 years, there was a time when we got a fairly significant amount of equalization funding in debt service. Because they froze the valuation rate per pupil, again, about 15 years ago, there's been no increase, and almost every district in the state has now fallen out of getting any kind of equalization. So this is, it's a placeholder, it gets us started. It's not the end, but it's a good place to get started. In terms of the information on page 19, there's a bunch of other bills of $1 million or more, and a lot of these are just special projects for special groups of folks. So Reading Corps, which we do make use of, they've added some money to it, but you have programs like Girls in Action Grants, which is only for the metro. We have the Santa Foundation, basically only for the metro. And so what we have in this particular piece is a lot of ones that really are funding individual programs, and again, they are grants, so it's not ongoing expenditures. And there's lots of detail about all of those if you'd like to read about what each one of them does. On page 22, you're also going to see another group of smaller items funded, and this is one where if you were reading through the stuff and taking a look at the information from Parents United, there was a discussion about the Eden Prairie Grant. And here it is, $500,000, basically to do what every other district in the state is being required to do for nothing.
How did that happen?
Well, let's talk about where does the chair of the House Education Finance Committee reside?
There's no checks or balances or...
Well, again, this is the inside baseball that occurs as part of the legislative process. So you've got a number of pieces here, some of which I'm sure are very reasonable, but you've got Rock and Read, you've got Race to Reduce Water Conservation, you've got a number of different kinds of grant pieces. And so these are pieces where, again, when a legislature has no money to fund everybody, they move to a strategy that says, we're going to do just a lot of little things that make certain groups of people happy and not really provide support for everybody. So those are kind of the levy pieces that are out there. Again, two tenths of one percent increase. Let's take a look at the policy things quickly then, and I just want to reflect on a couple pieces. On page 25, it talks about assessments. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we were given a requirement that we had to offer the ACT test to every student. Every student had to take it. Well, they've done away with every student having to take it, but they are saying that they will fund it for every student who chooses to take it. And if instead of the ACT, they want to take the SAT, they'll fund that too. And if they can't get either of those at their local school, they can get paid for them if they go to another location. It's one time, but it is an opportunity for kids to take a nationally-normed college readiness test, and, you know, I guess I would argue in many ways would have been the far better solution than any kind of high school MCA testing, for which kids have no desire or interest in performing well. On page 26, I would just catch for you the top of the page, terms of assessments there. You're going to see that, basically, in terms of assessment, MDE has to create a form for parents so they can learn about opting out of state and local tests. If you remember, it wasn't that many years ago that we were threatened with the idea that any parent opt out, because then you wouldn't have the participation rate that you needed. Now they're almost bending over backwards, trying to give people the opportunity to opt out. And while we aren't seeing that here in Northfield, there are a number of school districts now, especially in the metro, they're beginning to see large opt-out numbers. On page 27, I just would frame for you the issues around student discipline. This one is, in my personal opinion, is probably one of the most poorly thought-out pieces of additional legislation that you could ever have. It requires each board to report to MDE student-on-teacher assaults and intervention resolution within three days. Well, that sounds fine if you're talking about the assault of a teacher in St. Paul by a student. However, there's no definition of what assault means beyond what's listed in 60902, an act done with intent to cause fear, or intentionally inflict or attempt to inflict bodily harm. So when we have our elementary level-four student that bites a teacher, that kicks a teacher, that knocks a teacher's glasses off and gives him a black eye, every time one of those situations occurs, and in level-four programs they occur a lot, this appears to be something that's going to require us to report every one of those pieces and to have those pieces out there for people to take a look at. So again, it's the idea that in trying to do something, they have really created a very, very difficult situation for school districts trying to work with that. And while they've created a student discipline working group to review the Pupil Fair Dismissal Act and submit recommendations, that was an afterthought after they made the decision as to how they were going to do the other pieces. Page 28, the next really interesting piece, the civics test. The state, because of the Learning Law and Democracy Foundation, was basically talked into requiring every student, the high school level, to take a civics test. And the civics test would be taking 50 questions out of the 100 questions that are available within the United States Citizenship Test each year, and that every student sometime between ninth and 12th grade must take that. Sounds well and good until you look at the idea that there's no requirement to record how the student performed, the district can't prevent a student from graduating or deny a diploma if they don't do this. And so really, you've created something where you've not created another set of testing that needs to occur, for which there is no accountability of any kind. This one, we just kind of scratch our head on. In terms of page 29, if you take a look at the bottom, the data disaggregation piece, another piece that, again, a number of organizations have come to the legislature and said, well, we want to know data about our individual group of folks, and we need to have you address that. And so where before we had a fairly limited number of cohorts or groups of folks that were disaggregated for looking at this, now we're going to have every single home language we can think of. So if you have a Southeast Asian who is Hmong, that'll be a separate group. If you have a Southeast Asian that's Taidan, city people, city mountain people, that's a separate group. If you have various African people, every single language group within that could be separated and segregated out into a separate piece, and districts will have to collect and report all of that information. So we have no idea how that's going to happen, and a lot of the discussion I had with the folks this morning was saying, and you're going to have this ready for us before the fall, so we actually can do it. The next pieces are on page 30, and I'd just be very clear about these two pieces. We're looking at issues around, which is good for us, we already have a site team at every site. That's not an issue. But now they're basically telling us who needs to be on the site team, and specifically the things they want us to collect. And then, for every student who's not reading at grade level, district must provide a report on every student that doesn't read at grade level, and then all students who are identified under this section must be given alternative instruction. Every student. So in a district like ours, that has about 70% of our students performing at grade level in third grade in terms of proficiency, that means 30% of the students will need to have alternative instruction. And it will need to include students that we identify and screen for dyslexia or convergence in sufficiency disorder. And so we're looking at a huge additional commitment of support and resources with no money to back it up. But again, they saw this as policy, so they didn't believe there needed to be any money attached to it. You're going to see a list of new things that are required in WBWF, Mary, for World's Best Workforce. We now have gifted and talented plans, school readiness plans, systems on student access to effective diverse teachers, processes to examine equitable distribution of affected experienced teachers to low-income minority students. A lot of the last piece here is tied to the new ESSA law, the new federal replacement for no child left behind. Also, you're going to see some modifications bottom of that page in terms of licensure. We're now actually going to see the Board of Teaching be able to issue out-of-state licensed teachers with up to four initial licenses before they have to try to address all the things that Minnesota requires them to do before they can be licensed. And so we may actually be able to open the pool up a little bit in terms of bringing additional people into the process, and also doing the study group to try to deal with that. On page 33, just a couple of important pieces around discipline. And again, it's the fact that the teacher of record should have the general control and government of the school and classroom. The teacher may remove students from class under, and there's, it's not written right, but it's basically for any violent or disruptive conduct. However violent and disruptive conduct are not identified or defined, and the teacher typically has never had the ability to remove a student. That basically is the building principle. We also have no idea what remove means. Is remove removed for the rest of the day? Does remove mean suspension? Does remove mean recommendation for expulsion? Again, issues of what happens when people have lots of time and not any money. On page 34, just share with you a couple of things. Again, the Paperwork Reduction Act, which is saying we need to have 25% less paperwork, you know, developed. However, there is really, they are not moving forward with any kind of a universal system to gather and share data, and so we have no idea how they're going to do that. If there's a bright spot, I guess one bright spot is we did press to have modifications in the charter school law on authorizer evaluation. That bill was included as part of the omnibus bill, which means now the entire Part A of the charter authorization and renewal process will simply have a written sign-off by the district saying, yes, we do know how to run a school. Yes, we understand finance and personnel and curriculum and all the other pieces, and we can help support our charter schools in getting that to happen. So that was, I guess, a somewhat of a win. Then on page 36, just be aware that another piece sitting out there, like the tax bill and the transportation bill, that has the potential to be a huge torpedo somewhere down the road, is that they were not able to, although they passed the pension bill as part of the non-E12 items, that was also vetoed by the governor. And so what is happening there is they're trying to get it set up so that they've got a way to continue to fully fund the pension bill. By the governor vetoing this, that means no changes for this year, and what it means is that when they come back and have to address it, it's likely they'll have to address it at a higher level, because they will go on another year without trying to make a fix. Traditionally, when we've done pension bills in the past, they really have approached it with saying equal impact on each group. So retirees take part of the cut, current employees take part of the cut, districts take part of the cut in terms of what portion of the funding has to occur. Right now, no changes are made because that bill has been vetoed. And the omnibus elections bill was passed. So we are now in a position where we can allow a board member or the school board to appoint someone to a vacated seat. You only have to hold an election for the vacated seat at the next general election, but also then we have to allow 5% of the general election voters to sign a petition to negate the appointed school candidate. So again, every time we kind of take a step forward, we might get to take a step back. So in other words, if we have someone that would vacate the board, and as a school board, you basically identified a person to step in and fill out the remaining term till the next general election, if 5% of the general election voters, so the number of voters that voted in the last election, sign a petition, they could negate the appointed school candidate, and you'd have to go back and try to appoint another candidate. So just be aware that that's hiding in the weeds.
Well, the other piece, the next general election, in Northfield, we don't have off-year elections. So if it were to incur an off-year, we would still be doing a special election.
Yeah, in November. So that's the, not as quick as I would have liked it, but that is basically the core of the things that are in there. And again, for a session that spent no money and for which everybody was wanting to go home soon so that they could get back out on the election trail, we ended up with a lot of additional policy stuff that we're going to be living with for a long time, and we saw basically a lot of one-times funding to individual groups and individual programs, and again, only a two-tenths of one percent increase in terms of funding in general to school districts. Any questions? Any questions?
Board members, questions or comments?
I think it's probably appropriate that you provided legislative wrap-up as one of your final, just wish it was.
With a final ax.
I think there's some really concerning pieces.
You still want the job, Matt?
Yes.
There's obviously some very concerning pieces here.
There are some things that, that frankly, when we asked them this morning to help us understand them, they said, we don't know. And that's, I think is where we're going to be. We're going to see the department trying to figure out what the legislative intent was and trying to figure out what it needs to look like. Because there's some things here that will be unbelievable time impact on individual staff and pieces that I think will give us some very unrealistic look. I mean, again, if you just look at the whole issue of the fact that for Level 4 programming and especially programming where students are really struggling, you know, these are folks who are, are coming in and working with kids knowing they may be hit or kicked or bit or whatever. And that kind of comes with the territory and they are missionary angels that are willing to do that. But now to be in a situation where we have to report every single one of those incidents every day and then have it reported out on a statewide level seems really problematic.
But won't all schools, so all, all the numbers will increase, you know, so.
Right. The, the only difference you're going to see is districts that are working with or have Level 4 and Level 3 programs. And there are a lot of small districts that don't have any of those. That all of that's run through a co-op or through an intermediate unit or through some other group. And so theirs get reported out through the co-op or through the intermediate unit. And so it will tend, it will tend to, I think, more significantly impact larger districts than smaller districts in terms of that reporting piece.
This is excellent recap. Appreciate it, but just wish it.
Well, and you can kind of read it from at least four different perspectives. But I think what you're going to see overall, I think, is Tom's done a nice job as always of kind of putting those pieces together. And I think there are some things that we really need to watch very carefully as they actually are spun out and, and people are trying to work with them.
It sounds like maybe there's another group that needs to take a civics test, not, not our students.
Okay, so we'll move on, which I believe is probably a record number of items for individual action, at least in the seven years that I've been in.
Yes.
So we'll start to work our way through those items for individual action. The first is the proposed 2016-17 budget of funds. Dr. Richardson or Val, you're providing something.
Babbitt's, Babbitt's ready to go, ready to answer questions, aren't you, Babbitt? If anybody has any.
Mostly questions. I, I've obviously been here presenting over the last couple of months. Everything that I presented has basically just been compiled into this budget book that you had in your, in your materials. And just really here just to answer questions and I know the numbers, we make lots of jokes about how exciting they are, but they are, this is how we quantify all of our programming and is an essential part of, you know, being able to produce and live out the mission of our school district. So I take great pride in it. And I did try to add some more detail this year and some different things to kind of give you a different context and flavor to that and just give you some more information. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Board members, this is an item for individual action. So prior to questions or discussion, is there a motion to approve the proposed 2016-17 budget as presented for all funds? Moved by Noel Stuckett, seconded by Margaret. Okay, questions, discussion.
You do an excellent job, Ellen. Always impressed.
You alluded to some of the additional information that you provided. I thought it was absolutely amazing. I think it, it is so detailed and so wonderful. And I mean, I was really excited to read it. And I think what's really, the best thing about it really is just the transparency that provides our community. I mean, literally anyone could pick this up and within, you know, just the pages would know exactly how we spend every penny. And I think it's really an amazing document and I think you should be super proud of it.
Thank you.
And you have now set a high bar for yourself in providing this. Because I was going through, I'm thinking, oh my gosh, this is amazing. Have I just not seen this before? So I quickly went back to, to 15, 16. It's like, no, this is new. And Ellen's shaking her head. We all did, like, oh my God, this is amazing. So you even have us excited about the numbers now, but so thank you.
Glad to hear it.
So without, at the podium, are there any other questions board members have?
I just have one more comment along the same lines. I thought what was great was when we started asking questions about what Dr. Hillman was presenting. This, in action, we could, it was immediate, like, oh, I know which page and I know exactly what amount. And yeah, it's really usable.
Go ahead. Thank you. Excellent. Okay, any other questions, discussion prior to vote? Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item for individual action is School Board Policy 501, School Weapons Policy, Dr. Richardson.
Okay, and again, you have Policy 501. And if you remember, this is something that we reviewed with you originally back in April and now bringing it back to final approval. One thing that I would point to for you is, is we looked at legal references and one of our Eagle Vice Scholars on the board basically picked this out and said, this may be something that it makes sense to adjust. We're suggesting that we do the adjustment in the legal references on page 501-4 to eliminate the 18 U.S.C. definition of firearm and include in its place the definition of firearm as identified by the University of Minnesota and the Minskew system. So that would be the only adjustment or modification that we would suggest, other than the things that are shown to you in, in the document. And you'll see that there, this is the strikeout version, so it actually has the, the strikeouts that are included. And anything that is in italics is the new piece and anything that is struck through has been removed.
So just for clarification, we would need an amendment then to the motion?
We would need an amendment to the, to the motion, correct.
Correct.
Correct. And I believe you'll find that in your table file, correct, Anita? No, in your.
This was in the packet.
It's not there, somebody has to move it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to move that as an amendment. Okay.
Never mind, never mind. We're happy to do so. So it would be amended to, to modify by removing the 18 U.S.C. definition of firearm and replacing it with a definition that is from the U of M and the Minskew system. Someone would be.
I move that we remove 18 U.S.C. under legal references to be replaced by the U of M definition and Minskew definition, correct?
Can we do an amendment when we don't have the original motion on the floor? We don't have the motion.
We probably should do the motion with it as it's, as it's presented and then do an amendment and then vote on the amendment first and then on the motion.
Okay.
Because Bob, Bob is returning. It might even be Robert.
We need to move the original motion.
Okay, so I'll move the original motion.
Okay, so the, the motion is to approve School Board Policy 501, Policy as presented. Is there, there's a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Rob. Okay, so.
And then I move to amend the motion to replace, under legal references, to replace, where is it now? Yep, to replace 18 U.S.C. definition of firearm with the University of Minnesota and Minskew definition of firearm.
Okay, there's an amendment that's been moved. Is there a second to the amendment? Seconded by Fritz, is there a discussion on the amendment? So all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we have an amended motion to School Board Policy 501. Do we have a motion to approve that as amended? I think we have, okay, so we have a motion, so now we can vote on the main motion. So the motion is to approve School Board Policy 501 with the amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so the next piece then is?
The next item for individual action is School Board Policy 527, Student Use and Parking of Motor Vehicles, Patrols, Inspections, and Searches.
Okay, and what you'll see with this one is modifications on page 527-2 to provide some specific information about drug dog searches, purpose and procedure, so that we have a clear description of exactly why we're doing the drug dog search as an option and also specifically what happens if there's a hit by the canine on a particular vehicle or a locker and exactly how then it will be handled by district personnel as well as possibility of the law enforcement finishing that search. So again, this was again, in response to what we heard from board members saying, we need to provide some clarity for that piece.
Okay, so prior to discussion, is there a motion to approve School Board Policy 527, Student Use of Parking of Motor Vehicles, Patrols, Inspections, and Searches as Presented? Moved by Fritz, is there a second? Seconded by Ellen. Discussion or questions? And we have Joel here as well to answer any questions. Ellen?
So I have a question. So dissemination of policy is in the student handbook or other ways. And one of the things we had talked about was having some of the, not necessarily the, I can't remember if it was the drug dog search piece, but we had pieces of it on the parking pass that was going to be added in the language of the parking pass. And I didn't see, I knew we're voting next on the student handbook and I didn't see that included either. So I just wanted to, because it's not in the policy specifically, just wanted to just clarify, I don't think it has to be in the policy, I just wanted to.
It's on the.
Yeah.
It's actually on, go ahead.
The back of that, the back of the policy.
We'll, we'll.
Sorry. The back of the parking permit will actually have sections that are directly pulled from Policy 527, so it will include that section that is added as well as the pieces, and it's a little out of context here, but students parking of motor vehicles in school district locations, subsection A and B, and then patrols, inspections, and searches, subsection A, B, the new C, and then D and E, and then an explanation of the violations of the law.
And I assume it, we, once we approve this, then you can think about adding that to the parking.
Yep, exactly.
It is prepared to be done as soon as you approve this.
Other questions?
Couple of things. On, on that, we were wanting to bring that really to the kids' attention because it was on the back. And it didn't have a section that says, we, we had asked that, a section that says, the student says, you know, I understand my duties for this parking privilege and to sign that. So we had asked that that maybe was brought to the forefront, because the front was more about your parking pass, which in my opinion was less important than these issues. So I was thinking it should have been brought to the front, the things about displaying your pass.
All right, here's the updated language that you're referring to. It says, I hereby understand that this is bold, italicized, and underlined.
Just in case.
Using all that text box up there.
I hereby understand that by signing this agreement, I agree to abide by all district policies governing the parking lot in my vehicle while it's on the NHS campus, specifically Policy 527, the relevant portions of which I have read as it appears on the back of this registration form. I will notify Northfield High School, staff change, and it continues on with the, the previous language, and then there's a student signature box below it.
I love it. Okay, and then also under patrols, inspections, and searches, point B, we had talked about this before, where earlier we were saying if the student said, well, I'm not going to unlock my vehicle until my mom or dad gets here, that we said that was okay. But according to this, it really isn't. So it needs to be either one way or the other for the kids. It says, a student must unlock the vehicle or its compartments upon request by school official. Failure to do so is also of another violation. So, you know, remember, I had said the kids said they had to unlock it or it was another violation. And at that meeting, I heard, no, that it's okay, the kids can say, I want to wait for my mom and dad. But then we were saying, well, what if mom and dad's out of town for three days? You're not going to wait for that long. So we either need to own it the way it's written or not.
Well, I think the key thing will be that the policy, you know, this policy would be the way that we would be operating moving forward. So I think that, that discussion kind of came full circle, I think, at that particular meeting about the fact that there are, you cannot predict the timing of this particular scenario. We may not have the ability to wait. And you know, it's, it's a person who has signed off a piece on sign, you know, on putting their, their vehicle on our school grounds. And I believe that the appropriate pieces have been illustrated in both the application that Joel has mentioned and also the policy itself. I think there are going to be times we would not want to have to wait for that particular piece for a number of different reasons.
So we're just going to own it the way it's written? And that is a violation now to say, to not open it upon request?
Yep, correct.
Okay, and then under suggested changes to the citizen handbook, it says, two school personnel will conduct a search of the locker or vehicle in question. So in the handbook, I'm wondering if you, you should put in there that the student must open their car upon request, right then and there.
Margaret, can you tell me where you're reading?
Okay, I'm looking a little further on under suggested changes to the citizen handbook for next fall.
Is that the next, that's the next agenda?
Yeah. And so they kind of, they cross each other, that's why we're hitting it up.
And I think you want to come back and bring that up as part of that item if you're comfortable with where we are with.
Yeah, since we've determined it here.
527, let's, let's do it separate, do it and then come to suggested modifications in the handbook.
Other questions? Noel?
Under 5C, Drug Dog Searches, Purpose, and Procedure, is the phrase, a positive hit or hits defined by the courts so that there's no ambiguity of what that means? I think I know what it means, but I don't think I could defend it in court.
I'm not sure how, my, my updated language, and we talked about this before, Noel, was in the event of a positive identification by canines. So somehow I managed to miss that update, so.
So do, do we want to amend to, to change that language?
I think that would be best, yeah, because I remember.
Because I think identification is clear.
Right.
Yeah, it is, at least.
Because I think hit, hits is hit or hit is slang. It's, it's a slang description of what the dog is doing. If he alerts, I think is the other word that's used in the, in the canine police officer biz.
Anita, for a point of clarification, do we have a motion on the floor on this piece?
Oh, got, seconded by Iverson.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, so do we have a motion to amend?
I don't know.
Okay, so the motion to amend the School Board Policy 527 to read in the event of a positive identification with the subsequent following verbiage is moved by Noel. Is there a second? Seconded by Margaret? Is there any questions? So all those in favor of the amendment as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, is there any other questions or comments? I did want to ask, Joel, what, I know the District Youth Council was involved in, in some of this, so if you could kind of talk through how that piece worked. And I apologize, I meant to ask it on the initial piece we, on weapons, so maybe you can collectively talk about their work.
No, that's fine, and actually Matt can share, that particular meeting, I was, I was out, so he did share some notes with me, but he can certainly contribute as well. They were overall very pleased with the, the updates and the changes, particularly the clarification of the, of the definition of fire alarm, oh, fire alarm, firearm in 501 that you mentioned before. And there was just a conversation about that piece being a change. And I would say that, you know, in the subsequent conversations we've had at the district youth council level, I think for, and really, and I think Rob can, can either back or refute me on this, depending on what he heard versus what I heard, but really from the beginning of this conversation, it has been about, really it's been about stepping up. really it's been about stepping up the communication. I think that the notion of how these pieces are communicated, or the assumptions that we make about how much students know, or where students are going to find out, has been and continues to be the primary piece that they would like to see addressed. So I think that as we move now into the fall, you know, our plan is to coordinate with, or my plan is to coordinate with the APs to, as we get to class meetings in the fall, to really begin to articulate a change in how we communicate that, so beginning with a more purposeful approach to some of these specific policies in that meeting, we can't do them all, obviously, but then to have a process in place where throughout the course of the year, we're rolling it out in a way that kind of keeps the locations of those items at the forefront, so that it's not, so that doesn't present, it's never intended to be presented as a gotcha, but I think that we all kind of roll along and just assume all of the new students know exactly what the old students did, and what the staff has known all along, and so on, so I think that that piece is going to be a primary focus, and so the continued dialogue that I would envision with DYC into the fall year with the new membership is really to continue to evaluate that piece of the process. So I think that they were pleased with the updates in language that kind of removed some of those ambiguities that they had articulated initially, but I think that the ongoing discussion will be, and how is the school doing? How are we doing in the means of making sure that it's accessible, that it's easy to find? You know, kind of all those website discussions that we would have with the general public, so that, you know, and I would envision the first couple of months of our dialogue at DYC to involve that specific topic.
Excellent. Any other questions board members have about this policy? Okay, so we have a motion, a second of the amended motion.
It's already approved.
Yeah. Oh, we are.
Yeah, you've approved both policies.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So you're ready for the citizenship handbook? No problem.
All right, so student citizenship handbook is the next item for individual action.
And what you've done is just do the overview of the DYC part of your discussion, Joel, so now you're ready to talk about the changes.
All right, just as a reminder, what we talked about specifically, and these are specific to the items that we've been discussing since the, since the board work sessions in February. The citizenship handbook then, the definition of firearm that you, that is a part of the updated policy of policy 501, is included then in the firearm section of the citizenship handbook. In addition, new pieces, and a big part of your meetings in February and early March was the notion of what offenses are expellable, and how, excuse me, how well students and parents understand, you know, what types of offenses hit that, that level of response. And so in that handbook then, we've included the expellable offenses explanation, and then the chart that lists all of the types of offenses that could result in expulsion, and then kind of a guide as to say, is it the first time, second time, and third time, when those particular offenses result in a, in an expellable situation, or a recommendation for an expulsion. Further into the handbook then, just kind of a reiteration of that, the piece that you also talked about in February was the discussion of the agreement to withdraw in lieu of expulsion, expulsion? I'm having trouble making up words here. And then also the abeyance in lieu of expulsion, and then the explanation of what those two mean specific to, you know, a student essentially removing him or herself from the district, or a student removing him or herself from the high school and immediately transferring to the area learning center.
So with that overview, is there a motion to approve the changes to the 2016-17 student citizenship handbook?
I'm so glad, it's hard for you to say that.
Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Fritz. Questions, comments, or discussion? Margaret?
I do feel, under the drug dog search purpose and procedures, that where it says, "Two school personnel will conduct a search of the locker or vehicle in question", I think the sentence from the policy about a student must unlock their vehicle or its compartments upon request of a school official, failure to do so, et cetera, should be inserted right there. Just for sake of transparency.
So it's a matchup with what's in the policy?
Yes. And then my other question was under abeyance, my understanding was abeyance was the child agreed to transfer to the area learning center for at least the duration of the proposed expulsion period, and that there is to be no further violations during that time? That that was a piece of the abeyance? And I don't see language talking about that. Or were we talking that the student had to meet agreed upon benchmarks?
I remember that discussion in terms of our discussion was if abeyance was used, they voluntarily went to the Northfield Area Learning Center when they were, while they were there and during that expulsion period, that there would be no other violations.
Right, or that they would reach benchmarks of attendance, or whatever was agreed upon in this abeyance. Not just that they would go and attend and then come back. That's what I understood. So to me, the abeyance is missing a piece.
So what would be the result of additional behavior? I guess what I'm looking for is a way to.
I think what we understood was the, that we're putting aside the abeyance, the expulsion, but if another violation happens, we proceed with the expulsion.
Would it be possible, I'm thinking the sentence you might be looking for, Margaret, would be that, well, student will transfer to the Northfield Area Learning Center for at least the duration of the proposed expulsion period, and abide by the terms of the agreement? Because really, the agreement is going to be an individualized agreement based upon the student. So maybe simply adding something to the end of that sentence, where it says, "The abeyance in lieu of expulsion" would be at the end of where it says, "For at least the duration of the proposed expulsion period, and will abide by the terms and conditions outlined in the abeyance agreement." Because, is that what you're trying to get at?
Yes, that's it.
Because I think, Joel, what that does is that just gives, it gives the tenants of the agreement that are signed off by all parties, it just makes them enforceable.
Right, because you're saying, there was an expulsion, but we're setting it aside. If you meet these criteria, then you can come back. Yeah, I like that.
But I want to be clear that, and so what, I mean, what the language could essentially be saying, not in so many words, is that if I then commit a discipline offense at the ALC, the district will then proceed with expulsion proceedings.
That's what I understood.
The end of which could result in a student at the ALC. Because that's, isn't that protected by statute?
Right, that's a fair point.
But if, you can be expelled from the ALC. You know, you can go to the ALC, but a student can be expelled from the ALC. So if they go there and then have another violation, they could be expelled, then they would have to go search out another ALC, not in the district, because we only have one.
Or it could be the student's hope is to come back to NHS, but if they go to the ALC and don't abide by the agreed abeyance principles, now the expulsion from the NHS becomes permanent, and you've lost your chance to reapply to NHS.
And I think that's going to depend on the particular situation.
Right.
You know, I mean, I think what Joel is saying is there is the possibility of the fact that if a student were to have violated the terms of the agreement, may not have been an action that caused them to be expelled from the ALC, but if they made a violation that was against the agreement, they, we would then potentially proceed with expulsion period, expulsion hearing for a student at the high school. If that happens, they would have the right to re-enroll at the ALC, because that's required by state law in order to do that, so there is the possibility of that circular issue.
Right.
But at the same time, there could, if the violation was such that it also necessitated an expulsion hearing at the ALC, that's a, it just, there are some, any one of these is going to be unique, and it's going to have a different set of circumstances, and we're trying to write something that is a good-for-all time zone, so, and that's the uniqueness of having an ALC here as well, and the statutory language about the ALC.
But it would preclude that being able to reapply to NHS, or walk at graduation.
For the period of time that the expulsion.
Expulsion would have occurred, yeah.
But that's already assumed in the agreement, I mean, we're saying, the abeyance agreement says, for X period of time, you can't re-enroll. So you can't extend that period of, of the agreement. I mean, so to say that if you violate the terms of this agreement, you can't re-enroll during the period of the, I mean, so it's a little bit redundant. And I understand, I mean, I get what you're after, I just, I don't know, I mean, the abeyance is a, has an interesting nuance to it all in its own. And I just think that that language then, it kind of redirects it to itself.
Okay, so if a student is, it's September of their senior year, and they have a violation, and they're expelled for six months, they're expelled for a semester, they have to go now to the ALC.
They could go to the ALC.
They could go, that's one choice. They could choose the abeyance and go to the ALC, and re-enroll at NHS for the second semester and graduate with their peers.
Here is the, the language that suggests the potential of being something less than a year, is for our own convenience, we want to reserve the right to allow the student to re-enroll at the beginning of the next academic year. So if a student is, commits an expellable offense in September, they will not be back in January. It will be those nine months, but if they are a senior, there's no sense expelling them for 12, because those last, you know, in months 10, 11, and 12 are irrelevant. So if a student, or if a student is, maybe it's December, we will, you know, potentially expel for 12 months, but we'll also potentially expel for the remainder of that academic year, allowing the student then to re-enroll. And really, that's about the mechanics of how the school functions, and that it is, it puts a student at a further academic disadvantage, and really puts the staff with whom, that are working with that student at a disadvantage as well from the instructional standpoint. So it is not designed in a way for us to kind of arbitrarily shorten an expulsion. If it occurs during a school year, that student will be done for that academic year. The flexibility comes into play to say, are we prepared to allow that student to begin again in September after Labor Day, or do we want it to be the true 12 months? Because we have had situations where, third football game of the season, a student is, I'm just thinking from a historical situation, where, so it's three weeks into the school year, and a student faces that situation. It doesn't serve us very well to suspend for 12 months, it helps us a lot more to do 11 months in one week, so that we can get that student started at the same time as the other students in the classroom.
On the, on the last page of the, the details before you get to the cover of the handbook. It says, elementary cell phones, handheld electronic guidelines and procedures. I would insert the word students. My grandchildren say, "I do have an elementary cellphone." And I think we're referring to the student's cellphone as being an elementary student at the age of 12.
Yeah, and I'm, did you have that sure that I have the copy that included? Is that a this year update from the elementary?
It's page three of the suggested changes.
I don't have pages.
Well, it's one, two, three, there's three pages.
It would probably be the introduction to the first italic paragraph.
I don't have that.
Can you talk about the title?
Yeah, it's in the.
Elementary cellphone.
Yeah.
I'd add the word students, elementary student cellphone.
Because again, this piece, this piece itself.
That's right.
What's in the handbook is on page 12. It says, you know, there's for grades 6, 8, and 9, 12.
It was clear in the handbook.
So the question is.
I think the suggested changes are the ones that are, they're calling out what they changed in the handbook. If you look at page 12, it is just simply saying that it is, it is now differentiating between students who are in elementary school and not.
I would, yeah.
But all I'm saying is it's not there. It's not, it's not in the handbook itself, it needs to be in the citizenship handbook, and I don't see it anywhere. Do you? Yeah, so I think the issue is that we just, we need to get the information from this page on cell phones inserted appropriately under the cellphone portion of the document.
And we need to add another grade level.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, there would need to be a grade K5.
Yep. Good, thank you.
Add another question?
So we would be happy to fix that.
Okay, board members, other questions? Margaret?
I didn't notice this before, under expellable offenses, where we say harassment and violence, what's the difference between violence and assault aggravated and assault physical? I mean, the penalties are relatively the same, but to me, I'd be looking at that thinking, why is physical assault listed differently than violence?
And if you look at the definitions that are earlier in the student citizenship handbook, there are two separate definitions of those.
Okay.
So aggravated assault is committing an assault on another person with a weapon, or an assault that inflicts great bodily harm upon another person is prohibited, prohibited. And then the assault physical is the acting with intent to cause fear in another person of immediately bodily harm, or death, or intentionally inflicting or attempting to inflict bodily harm upon another person is prohibited, so the one includes the weapon component, and the other is, does not include that. So those are the two, it's just, there's two different definitions, which is why they are listed separately in the grid of expellable offenses.
Well, the violence have the harassment, it's the same reaction, according to the expellable offenses. Probably doesn't matter, but I just thought violence, and then putting this elsewhere, it was confusing to me, so. And then also, under disrespectful behavior, that videoing of staff members or students without permission is prohibited, in this day and age, like the ACLU has an app that kids can push while they're videotaping an incident of racial discrimination or violence. And it can be very helpful in criminal proceedings afterward, or kids are videotaping the fight at school, or the case where the security officer picked up that student and body slammed her. It was because students were there videotaping at that moment, so I'm uncomfortable with this sentence being.
Margaret, can you get, tell me where you are?
Also, I'm sorry, I'm on, under the changes, on the last bit of the changes, under disrespectful behavior, that the sentence, the videoing of staff members or students without permission is prohibited.
You want to add some language instead of the kernel action?
Well, in public, none of us has a reasonable expectation of privacy. If I'm filmed at Bridge Square, my privacy has not been violated, because I'm in a public place. This is a public school.
Like you're dealing with minors too.
Can I just, can I ask that, as we have discussion, that board members are recognized by the chair?
I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with this sentence, because I think the videoing of incidents at school by students or even by staff can be helpful.
Ellen?
And again, my understanding of this piece really came from the middle school, and the concern there is that kids with iPads are continually wanting to use that iPad to video something that's going on in their classroom. And the concern is that if that becomes the norm. And the, the concern is that if that becomes the norm of, we've got kids videotaping each other all the time instead of using their iPad for an appropriate purpose. So, I, I really think it was about trying to ensure that, that kids are not using their cell phones or their iPads in, in, in an inappropriate way.
Or disruptive.
Or a way that disrupts the classroom. And that was really, I think, what the, what the original focus of that language was.
Well, I think it's about teaching students the respect, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The, what we're trying to teach students that it is, it is appropriate and polite to ask permission, you know, prior to that kind of activity. So, you even heard Mr. Daniels on this evening saying, hey, I talked to, you know, this child's parents, it was okay that we use this. I think that that's from the perspective of what it was written in terms of promoting that pro-social behavior of having the courtesy of asking, you know, for the permission to record those kinds of pieces. And so thankfully, we do not have a lot of the incidents like you have suggested, and the bottom line, this was written in, in an attempt for, to promote pro-social behavior as we do with a number of other PBIS components. From that perspective, I absolutely understand it, and because if we're going to promote it, there needs to be the ability to hold people accountable for that. I also think that there's a difference in terms of, you know, we're talking about educational data, you know, as part of that as well, which there's another component there that we would need to look into in terms of whether that, in some cases, that may not even be allowed, you know, to be released in some of those cases. So, I, I think there's a few pieces beneath the surface, but I think it was really brought up from the perspective of teaching pro-social behavior and not just recording my friend or my teacher without their permission.
Margaret. And I totally agree. It can be disruptive, it can be nefarious, it can end up on somebody's Facebook page, it could be a violation of somebody's privacy. How do we deal with that? Yet at the same time, these kids should be able to film something that's happening that they feel is really not right, so they can give it to the police or give it to you. That this is what I saw happening in the locker room, and you guys need to see that this happened.
And we do that frequently.
Yeah.
Over the course of the year.
Yes, I'd hate to tell the kids it's, it's prohibited, because you might need that.
Right, but a student who's going to videotape his or her friend in a fight isn't going to say, but I'm not going to do it because it's against school rules. You know what I mean? I mean, so it, it allows us to have that professional judgment to say, if you were videotaping a teacher or a student without their permission.
For fun.
That's a whole category of, of behavior that's very different from a, a student who's being, you know, Joe Q. Public or, you know, being a good citizen. We, we, our professional judgment is going to incorporate the notion of being a good citizen over and above, oh, but being a good citizen broke the rules, so therefore you face a consequence.
That's what I'd be afraid of, is that this has a, a message that might say that to these kids.
Ellen.
So, I have kind of a question on that, but it's actually just on the handbook would, I'm a little, I keep getting confused with some of the questions, and I think it's because some of the pieces that are in, we have this sort of, I put the Roman numerals, these first three pages that don't have, some of them are in the handbook that we're seeing, and some of them aren't yet in the handbook. So, I was thinking with the disrespectful behavior piece, if it was in that slotted where disrespectful behavior, you saw it in context, right. But I mean, if you look actually in the handbook for that language, same with the elementary cellphone and then the bodily harm, some of the pieces aren't actually in the handbook yet that we're looking at on, and some of them are. So, at first when I thought that, saw this, I thought, well, these are things that are going to go in the handbook, but some of them are, and some of them aren't. So, in this piece, I thought, maybe if we saw the language, if you saw it, it's couched under disrespectful behavior, so you know how this is, as a student, you read it, it's under disrespectful behavior, it's when it's considered. So, I mean, there's, I guess, I was thinking that part of it is because we're, we're seeing them separate, and some of these aren't actually folded into the handbook yet. And that when you start to see something in context as a student, you know, you can recognize how then the administration is going to be viewing it and, and, and understand the judgment.
You didn't get permission, and that's disrespectful, it falls under disrespectful behavior. Yeah, that videotaping under the context of it's a disrespectful act, not being John Q., good citizen. Yeah.
But that, so I, the, I guess the flip side of my question is, can, can you maybe explain why some of the pieces are folded?
Well, I think what happens, so that the middle school, high school assistant principals annually make the, the, the recommendations for changes to the handbook. The changes in the handbook then are processed by our clerical team for fall implementation. So, my guess is that the process was, they're looking through the, you know, and I'm speculating here, that they're looking for, through the handbook as it, as it exists for 2015, 16, and they're, they're taking note of the things that they plan to change and presenting those to you as a board, so you're aware of the changes that will occur. But then in, in the example of our high school, you know, Lynn Fossum then is, is the one who's in charge of the specific high school handbook. Heather Kohinka then makes the changes to the citizenship handbook that we, we recommend. So, you know, that document then is worked on over the summer. So, if, if, we would have to change the timing of this process in order to have a citizenship handbook that has all of the updates in it ready to go for fall now, or else shift this, this approval process to later in the, the summer or shortly prior to the school year, so that, that, that process takes place. Because the two things are happening, you know, at different paces. But this, this timeline that we're working on today is a matter of recording the changes that are going to be made to the handbook, and then those, those changes then are implemented for the fall of the year.
Jeff.
I, I think part of our job here as an administrator in a school is to set policy, and the fact of the matter is, let's have a code of conduct that's, that's all about conducting yourselves as a decent person, a decent individual. We don't need to get into, I mean, yeah, it's pretty obvious, and hopefully for some people, is that videoing staff members and students without the permission should be kind of common sense and fine. I mean, if you come across a fight or some other thing, yeah, go ahead and do that. But I don't think we need to, to line up a, a row of civil liberties lawyers and, and trial lawyers and stuff to, to debate all this stuff. Let's just set a decent, respectful code of conduct and, and absolutely trust our administrators and, and people, for them to go back to, if they, if they think that there's a fight or something, let them be the thing of that. It's not, you know, i- i- it's not against the law to, to have, you know, disruptive behaviors. I just think, let's not get too far off on the legalism part. Just try to set a good code of conduct for kids and, and let them, you know, decide where the, where the line is and if they want to pursue that, you know, further on. But I think we're getting kind of deep in the woods here for, for legalism versus a decent code of conduct. So, that's all I've got to say. I guess, as, as, again, just reviewing this one more time, I think that the thing that we're seeing, Joel, in, in terms of this particular piece, is that the information on firearms, the information on drug dog search, the information on withdrawal and abeyance are all inserted into the citizenship handbook as a draft. They're inserted as italicized language to be put in. The, the expellable offense grid is inserted into the draft handbook. So, I think the, the, part of the issue is just that when the board's gotten to this third page, the elements that are there that we say are going to be put in the handbook have not actually been inserted into the draft. So, I think that's, that's really where the confusion is right now, is people are saying, well, I thought I would find it on the page that had to do with cell phones or the page that had to do with disrespectful behavior, and it's just not there because not all the pieces were inserted.
Right, and, and my point of explanation for that is that the firearm, expulsion, search, all of that piece came out of a process that occurred in February and March in terms of those, those sessions with the board. So, it was really something I was doing separate from, it's the same, same documentation that we're using, but it was really, it was really not meant to kind of overlap the process that the assistant principals do on an annual basis, as it obviously is in this, this particular piece. But we can certainly take, take steps to fix that.
So, I would just like to take a minute then and recap what discussion we've had regarding suggested changes as possible amendments to the motion. Under drug dog search, we were going to insert the language that a student must unlock a locked motor vehicle or its compartments, otherwise they're in violation of the policy. We were going to add in the abeyance language and some language around abiding by the terms of the agreement and the abeyance agreement. Then there's been possible discussion about removing under cellphone usage, the video taking, taping of staff members or students without permission is prohibited. So, as I see those, those are the three proposed amendment changes to this motion.
Margaret, you have a question? Well, to Jeff's point, you know, under disrespectful behavior, in the, as it's written in the policy handbook, and under disruptive behavior, we don't really enumerate what those are, you know? Making silly noises when you're in fourth grade, you know? We don't enumerate what they are. So, it could be that, that being disruptive with your cellphone and your iPad, it just falls under disruptive or just disrespectful behavior. But it sounds like maybe at the middle school, it's become such a problem that they feel it needs to be enumerated. Is that what I'm hearing?
And I wouldn't indicate that we have had a flurry of that kind of activity. But I think that, again, it's attempting to be proactive in terms of making sure that in alignment with the PBIS system that we have in our secondary buildings, that we're calling out those pieces, in this case, something that is age-appropriate pushing of boundaries and some of those kinds of things. And a lot of our middle school students, it's the first time that they've had a personal cellphone. There's a lot of kids don't get a cellphone until they enter middle school. For a number of years, it was the first time that students had access to their own personal digital device, because our one-to-one started in sixth grade. We now know that's starting in fourth grade. So, that kind of intentional instruction will modify how that piece comes before. But what we know with middle school students is that especially need to be very specific, because as a former middle school junior high principal, someone would say to me, well, where does it say that I can't do that? And that's a piece where from time to time, we need to provide greater instruction and greater definition of that in those cases. And so, I, I really believe that it is not completely out of line to include that. I think that it's, I would also come back to what you said before, Margaret, about, there's a lot of times we use what we call the reasonable person theory. And, and I think is the reasonable person, person theory would state that, you know, this language designed to cover the normal day-to-day life of adolescents versus a unique and difficult situation, a reasonable person would say, oh, of course it's okay that the person did that at that time because the circumstances warranted it. In that case, we've got much bigger issues than, you know, the person recording that piece. And so, one of the things, a student citizenship handbook can never govern every single piece of behavior. You are always trying to provide the best, it's instructional tool. We're trying to provide the best instructional tool that we can for our buildings to administer a code of conduct, you know, that allows for an orderly and positive school day. So, I, I would just, in terms of, I understand where you're coming from, but I think that reasonable person component on that, to me, would mitigate the need to pull that out. It's my, it's my take on it.
Okay, other questions or discussion? We'll need to take action on the amended changes as I listed.
So.
Yes, Ellen.
Would we say, we have these as three separate amendments?
If the group is, we could do it as three separate amendments, or we could do it as one overall amendment to suggested changes?
I think you could just say as, with, with the proposed amendments.
I can repeat the proposed amendments, so everyone's clear.
I was just thinking, I was uncomfortable with this sentence, but I don't really necessarily want to propose it as an amendment. I'm just uncomfortable with that sentence.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you for the point of clarification. It wouldn't be an amendment. I'm sorry, that would, that would stay. So, there would only be two amendments. So, let me just recap. What I understood, the discussion has come to the conclusion of the suggested changes to student citizenship handbook, we're recommending two amendments. One is, under drug dog search, there would be language that says a student must unlock a locked vehicle or in its compartments upon the request of a school official. Failure to do so is a violation of this policy. The second amendment change would be withdrawal and abeyance language to include and abide by the terms of the agreement in the abeyance agreement. I'm sorry, we would leave disrespectful behavior under cellphone as its. So, there are two suggested amended changes. Is there a motion to move the amendment?
Move.
Move by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. Is there any discussion? Okay, so let's vote on the amended changes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, we need to then do, I believe we still need to vote on the main motion of approving the suggested changes.
Correct.
Okay, so let's, we have a motion and a second, so if there's any further discussion. Okay, let's move to approve the suggested changes to the student citizenship handbook for 2016, 17 as presented with amended changes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, that takes care of the citizenship handbook and those pieces, quality pieces for the 2016, 17 year. So, we can move on to the Northfield Middle School driveway project. Dr. Hillman.
Yeah, so in your packet, you had a description of the middle school entry driveway improvement project, as I mentioned at the last meeting. We are waiting for some additional costing to try to get the best price. You may recall when ATS and R worked with us on some of the initial parts of the facilities plan, they had projected that that project would cost around $200,000. What we're proposing is that you accept the quotations that have been submitted as listed in your packet, which total $109,000. So, significantly less than $200,000. But we also know this, as you are well aware, this is one of the most requested changes that we have, and we believe that it will also address some key things that we heard, not only in our face-to-face facilities meetings, but also that have come through in our thought exchange processes.
So, is, is there a motion to approve the, the, the motion to approve using operating capital fund balance to fund the project recommendations for widening the middle school driveway at a cost not to exceed $109,202? Moved by.
Two hundred and twelve.
Two hundred and twelve, sorry. Moved by Fritz, second? Second by Jeff? Okay, so do we have any questions on this?
No.
Is there any thing to address handicap parking at middle school, including this?
Not at this time. This particular piece just simply widens the driveway to create a third lane for essentially pull-off traffic, and then a sidewalk to help students to get from the new crosswalk that the city and Minda will be installing up closer to the school.
Thank you.
Margaret.
The way I read this, it says moving our sidewalk to meet the new crosswalk. Does that mean, if I'm standing on the Arbor Street side looking at the middle school, the crosswalk is on my left, south, and there'll be now a sidewalk on the south side?
Correct.
Does it mean eliminating the one on the north side that goes up to the school?
I do not have a, a correct, an answer for you on that right here. I, I don't see it in my, and I, I.
Because as I read this, moving our sidewalk to meet, because you're going to widen that street to be three lanes now. Because if you eliminate the sidewalk on the north and all those kids coming down the bike path and everything, you have to go in front of three lanes of traffic to get up to the middle school.
My senses that that sidewalk will be replaced, but I, I, I do not know that for sure.
Okay.
I just don't want to make something up for you, Margaret.
Yeah, I'm only okay with it if the side, there's a sidewalk on both sides. Yeah.
And I can find that out.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But we would like to get moving on this particular piece.
Okay, any other questions? So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. As I said, the collective chair heard round the world that they were fixing the middle school driveway.
Yay!
Yay, good stuff. Let's move on then to the next item, sixth item for individual action, technology services position modification, already outlined by Dr. Hillman. Do we have a motion to approve the recommended changes to the technology services department positions at a cost of $21,000 for the 2016, 17 school year?
I will.
Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. Is there any questions or comments about this motion? None? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for being here to answer any questions. So, item number seven for individual action, resolutions, resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy, something we do yearly. Dr. Richardson?
Yes. Basically, Anita has put this information together for you. Again, it demonstrates the resolution, and that the, the timing for the filing of candidacy will begin on Tuesday, August the 2nd, at 2016, and should close at 5:00 PM on Tuesday. will begin on Tuesday, August the 2nd at 2016 and shall close at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, August the 16th. And again, provides the information in terms of individual needed to come in to sign up, that there's a filing fee of $2, and describes what the candidate must have to be eligible, which is basically they must be 21 years of age, must be resident of the school district from which the candidate seeks selection, or at least 30 days before the general election, and must have no other affidavit on file for any other office at the same primary. So again, very similar to what we've done in the past, but again, it's the timing is Tuesday, August the 2nd through Tuesday, August the 16th.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy as presented?
It's a vote.
Moved by Ellen, second. Second by Fritz. Danita, is this a roll call vote? Okay.
It's a resolution.
Okay, strap on.
Aye.
Quit out.
Why does it say a roll call vote?
Because it's a resolution that requires one sleep at the switch.
It has to do with the election process, so it's definitely buttoned up.
Can I have your answer? Thank you. Palazzo?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
I forgot Iverson, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Bogot?
Aye.
It's Dr. Iverson.
Did you, I'm sorry. Admin?
Aye.
So that takes care of all of our items for individual action. We move on to items for consent grouping. Just as a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Rob? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on then to items for information. First item for information is appointment of superintendent evaluation subcommittee. I, there are two board members who stepped forward willing to do this work, Ellen Iverson and Fritz Bogot, and I will serve on the subcommittee as well as we move through the process of evaluating and possible recommendations for a new superintendent evaluation that we would come back to the full board with a report and approval of any recommended changes. Second item for information is the enrollment report.
Yes.
And it cooperated with Dr. Richardson in his last school board meeting.
Yes.
Reaching an all-time.
We have an all-time high of 4,026 students. And really, I think the key pieces we've noticed here are very, very steady enrollments at all three of our elementary buildings, continued high enrollment in our preschool programming, and as we would anticipate, growth in enrollment in the ALC as we move toward the end of the year. So putting us at 4,026, which again is the highest, the highest enrollment I can remember. But obviously, someone else might have remembered something earlier. Noel, do you ever remember us having more than 4,026 students?
There are days when I don't remember where I parked my truck.
Me also, and those days are moving closer all the time. But anyway, I think we're in a really good position. We are very, very stable. And that's, with that slightly growing piece, as Val is doing calculations, should put us in a good place as we look at the numbers for the final calculations for average daily membership, which again is.
In respect to your question, I don't believe I've ever seen it in a roll call.
I don't believe so either. Thank you.
Okay, so just as a reminder, future meetings, we're off for a little bit of a hiatus until Monday, July 11th, 7:00 board meeting. Just a reminder, we will be meeting in the Northfield High School auditorium as they will be doing some work in the media center at that time, followed by Monday, August 8th, regular school board meeting here in the high school media center. And then I also wanted to just point a little bit further down the road, Monday, August 22nd, just a special note to board members as you're planning your, making your summer plans, if you can let me know. There's already two board members who will be gone for that August 22nd board meeting. We do need four for a quorum, so as your plans take shape, keep me posted if you, beyond the two that I am aware of, if you'll need to miss out this 22nd board meeting. So, wow, here we are.
And here we are, and it is three minutes of time. So to avoid that untimely situation of having to ask to amend the, to move the agenda beyond 10 o'clock.
So you're going to make us, you're going to make us sit till exactly 10, 4,000 students.
Let's try to finish this up so that that doesn't happen. Okay.
Well, I think, I think that this just really comes as a really difficult time for all of us to know that this is it. And we just cannot begin to express our gratitude and our sincere thank you to everything you've done for this district and.
And I appreciate, I appreciate.
Encore?
Now let's get out of here before 10 o'clock.
So with that, I asked for a motion to adjourn.
I'd move in here.
Moved by Noel, second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.